Welcome to the third hearing of the committee's inquiry into the proposed aerial shooting of brumbies in Cozyosco National Park. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians on the land on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respect to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Emma Hurst and I am Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing, and I urge all witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. I welcome our first witness, and thank you for giving your time to give evidence today. Could I begin by asking you to state your name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name's Andrea Harvey. I'm an Associate Professor at the University of Sydney and a Research Fellow in Wild Animal Welfare at the University of Technology, Sydney. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Wonderful, thank you. And do you have an opening statement that you'd like to give?
I do. So I've already introduced myself. A little bit more about myself, I have postgraduate veterinary qualifications in animal welfare science, including a PhD in assessing wild horse welfare. I've been working with wild horses for 11 years across a range of areas, so in addition to my PhD that involved two years of fieldwork across different sites in Cozyosco National Park, I've also carried out pro bono veterinary work for a range of brumbie rehomer's over the last 10 years, including gelding over 100 stallions for rehoming. I've also conducted immunocontreceptive trials in captive brumbie populations and have personally homed and trained brumbies. I've published and lectured widely on the subject of wild horse welfare. I was also the veterinarian and Deputy Chair of the Scientific Advisory Panel that ran for two years from 2019 to 2021 for the development of the 2021 Wild Horse Management Plan. I've subsequently been engaged in consultancy work for National Parks and Wildlife Service, providing advice and undertaking animal welfare audits for a range of the management methods that are used or have been trialed. I was not, however, involved in the animal welfare audit for aerial shooting. I'm here today not to give my personal opinion on aerial shooting or other aspects of wild horse management, but as an expert in animal welfare, and specifically in wild horse welfare, to provide factual information. I consider my role is to provide high-level expertise on the welfare impacts associated with aerial shooting and other management methods, using my knowledge of scientific evidence based both on literature and my first-hand experience. By doing so, I hope to assist sound, honest, and transparent scientifically-informed decision-making that truly prioritises animal welfare outcomes and the ethical management of wild horses. Wild horse management's an ethically challenging scenario, and there are no easy solutions that will please everyone, but we must be honest and transparent about those challenges and how decisions are made. If the government decides to use aerial shooting for wild horse management, it must be transparent in the reasons for doing so, and must be honest to the public about the welfare impacts of shooting horses from helicopters. Proponents of aerial culling frequently state that it's the most humane lethal management method, and some even say the most humane way of managing wild horses, but this is wrong. The RSPCA definition of a humane death is when an animal is either killed instantly or rendered insensible until death ensues without pain, suffering, or distress. Aerial shooting achieves none of these aims. Aerial shooting involves pursuing horses with a helicopter, which even if for one to two minutes can cause varying degrees of breathlessness, muscle fatigue, exhaustion, and heat stress, particularly if they're galloping at maximal speeds through fear from the pursuing helicopter. Following the chase, horses are shot with bullets aimed at the chest. With a chest shot, animals die as a result of hemorrhage. The time to death is variable, depending on the precise location of the shot within the chest. It is possible to be a rapid death if the shot is directly into the heart, a level of precision that would be very challenging from the air, but death is never instant, as is required to state that it's a humane death. The gunshot will cause pain by penetration of muscles, bone, and nerves, and the resulting hemorrhage causes weakness, breathlessness, and anxiety. This major hemorrhage causes a reduction in blood pressure, which will result in horses usually dropping quickly to the ground, but precisely when insensibility or death occurs is impossible to state with any certainty from the ear. It is fair to say that subsequent multiple shots will usually ensure that the horses do die quickly, and with the current operating procedures, it would be unlikely that any horse suffers for longer than several minutes, but they certainly do not die instantly. They will inevitably suffer pain and distress prior to insensibility and death. These welfare impacts may be short in duration, but they are severe in intensity. To the best of my knowledge, no expert animal welfare advice provided to the government over at least the last eight years has recommended aerial shooting in this way. The Independent Technical Reference Group that advised on the 2016 draft management plan only recommended aerial culling if chase times were less than one minute and horses were rendered immediately insensible after a first shot to the head. The Scientific Advisory Panel that I was Deputy Chair of made similar recommendations, but it subsequently became clear that this was impossible to achieve due to the technical challenges of shooting from the air. Both expert committees recommended aerial shooting should only be considered in very specific circumstances. Furthermore, there are substantial inherent challenges in auditing animal welfare outcomes with aerial culling. Indeed, they cannot be effectively audited in the same way as other methods. In the last two weeks, I initiated a poll of veterinarians conducted through the Centre for Veterinary Education of the University of Sydney, and to date, 81% of the 36 respondents so far do not consider any form of aerial shooting with chest shots to constitute a humane death, with those that did consider aerial shooting to be humane only accepting a less than one-minute chase time. The Scientific Advisory Panel recommended following the International Consensus Principles for Ethical Wildlife Control, published in 2017. These principles include that management methods should cause the least harms to animal welfare to the least number of animals; further, that control methods should be justifiable, socially acceptable, and systematically planned. The way that aerial culling has been hastily introduced into Cozyosco National Park goes against all these internationally-recognised consensus principles.
Thank you. I might start with a couple of questions, just because I was interested in your opening statement. At the beginning of your opening statement, you talked about the fact that you've been involved with rehoming horses, rehoming brumbies specifically. We had another witness come to this inquiry that said that rehoming was extremely cruel, and said that actually aerial shooting was less cruel than rehoming these animals. As a veterinarian, could I get your opinion on that?
I think that's absolutely not true. I think, of course, with any rehoming, and this applies for all animals in all situations, there are always some situations where welfare outcomes may not be optimal, and those are constant challenges in rehoming of all animals that we need to continuously strive to improve and overcome those hurdles. But it's absolutely true that there are lots of huge success stories of brumbies that have been rehomed, and it is possible to do in a very humane way.
Thank you. You also mentioned, you said that there are very, like, for aerial shooting, there needs to be very specific circumstances that need to be met. You know, the government's SOP for aerial shooting allows shooting during foaling season. It doesn't specify any maximum chase times. It allows shooting in mountainous and tree-covered terrain where it's harder to see the horses. Do you have concerns around some of those aspects around the SOP, and do you feel that the current program meets those very specific circumstances that you mentioned?
I do have concerns about those, and I don't believe that it meets the specific circumstances. The recommendations for when aerial culling may be needed was very specific circumstances where no other methods may be suitable for specific horses in specific locations of the park. There's an inherent problem with auditing the animal welfare outcomes with aerial culling, particularly that was highly lighted in the recent trial, where animals could only actually be assessed within a few minutes of being shot if they were in an open plain area where the helicopter could effectively land safely in order for the veterinarian to go and check that those horses were dead. So effectively, it can't be audited in areas where a helicopter can't safely land quickly.
Yeah, thank you. Just to go back quickly on regards to the rehoming, can you talk a little bit about the rehoming that you've done, where you've seen it being done in a humane way, and where it's actually for the animals' better welfare?
I think going from the beginning, one of the misconceptions that I've seen arise a lot during the inquiry is that from the point of passive trapping of these animals, that some people perceive that to be cruel because they're wild animals, and they perceive that they are going to be very distressed by that process. But actually, the way in which the trapping is done is extremely good. I have audited these processes. The welfare standards are extremely high because the horses are gradually habituated to yards, so at the point that they're trapped in the yards, they're very used to going into those yards and associating it with positive experiences because they get hay and salt licks within the yards. So by the time they're actually trapped to be loaded for transport, they're generally speaking pretty calm. The National Parks and Wildlife staff are highly skilled in managing these horses from the point of trapping transport and transporting to their holding yards. They are effectively already training the horses from the first point that they approach them in the yard. They're training them to associate the presence of people as a positive thing. So in fact, even by the time the horses are transported to a rehomer, they often are really already relatively calm and very accepting of people at that early stage, and that's purely due to the way that the trapping is done and the skill of the staff involved. Certainly, there could be different outcomes if it wasn't done in that way.
Thank you. So your opinion is that the rehoming that's currently being done in Cozyosco National Park is a high welfare project?
Yes, I think that there is variation. I think that the situations where there is the highest welfare outcomes are when horses are habituated to people and receive some level of training before they then go on to other homes, and that the people that are taking the horses are experienced people and are very committed to their care. Problems can arise when well-meaning people take on horses that they're not experienced to be able to manage, and that's a process that needs continuous improvement, for sure, but certainly there can be very good welfare outcomes when that's done well.
Thank you. And one more question before I throw to other committee members. I know you've done research about the mental state experiences of wild horses. For the benefit of the committee, can you, you know, talk through some of that research and how that would apply to, you know, horses being chased by a helicopter, potentially surviving horses, or horses being split from family groups? You know, what's that sort of mental state? How does that research apply to what's happening with aerial shooting?
Yeah, so my whole PhD really was about identifying what we call indicators of welfare in wild horses. So these are physical changes that we can observe or measure, and scientifically validating them in terms of the mental experiences that they are likely to reflect. And so we can certainly pick up changes in horses' postures, body language, facial expressions, for example, when they are experiencing pain, anxiety, distress, fear.
Thank you. And so how does that then apply to, I guess, being chased by a helicopter, surviving, sort of, you know, a shoot, and being maybe one of only one family group being a survivor? What will the experience of those horses be?
Certainly, horses are, when they're fleeing from a helicopter, they're fleeing because they're extremely fearful, and the problem with the way that aerial shooting works is that they usually will be going at maximal speed in order for the helicopter to be close enough to get as accurate shots into the horses as they can. And in order to get close enough, they've got to be chasing the horses pretty fast, so the horses will be going at maximal speed, and that is because they are fearful. Obviously, the type of other more subtle changes in things like their body postures and facial expressions are not going to be observed from the ear, so if somebody is trying to do an animal welfare audit from the ear, they might say they can't perceive any evidence of animal welfare impact, but that's just because they can't be seen from the ear. When, I think we know that when social animals like horses, that are highly social, get split up from herd members, that they usually will exhibit signs of distress. Again, in this situation, we may not be able to observe those signs of distress, but we know that they exist from other situations.
Thank you. The Honourable Wesfey?
Thank you, Chair. Associate Professor Harvey, thank you very much for appearing today. I would go through your credentials, but I know Ms Sue Higginson will probably touch on that a bit later because she tends to do that with all of the expert witnesses. I just, well, you do often do that. I just wanted to drill down on a little bit. In your opening statement, you talked about the RSPCA guidelines for, I guess, adverse animal welfare outcomes, but you've given in your opening statement evidence that it would seem it's impossible for the RSPCA's guidelines to be met with aerial culling. Is that your opinion, that that is the case?
The, I guess, what I was providing in my opening statement was the RSPCA's definition of what a humane death is, and yes, their definition of a humane death cannot be met with aerial culling.
Okay. And in that instance, then, last time we heard from the Australian Veterinary Association that they, I guess, were not worried about the adverse animal welfare outcomes, or not, they didn't believe that there would be adverse animal welfare outcomes. Could you provide some context? I think you said you'd done some research through a veterinary group. Can you provide some context into that research and what the view might be around some of those comments from the AVA?
I think firstly, using the word humane can be a little bit misleading because that means different things to different people. So we've talked about a specific definition for a humane death, but when we're talking more generally about what's a humane method of managing wild horses, people will use lots of different factors to take into consideration to conclude what they think is humane. And so when we're talking about animal welfare, I prefer to talk about animal welfare impacts because that's very specific. We're talking about the impact on animal welfare, and we're not thinking about any other factors. I think often when people are answering the question about whether something is humane, they aren't directly answering the question about whether it's having adverse animal welfare impacts. They're trying to interpret a lot of different information, so thinking about practicalities or finances or what else. You know, they're trying to interpret lots of different factors into their answer rather than just thinking about the animal welfare outcomes, and I think that can lead to misleading answers.
Okay. So I guess in that respect, then, do you believe that the current aerial culling programme that's underway through National Parks and Wildlife Service is resulting in humane deaths of the brumbies? And do you think that it can provide guaranteed animal welfare outcomes in the context of the SOPs being actioned the way that they are?
If we stick to the definition, the RSPCA's definition of what a humane death is, aerial culling doesn't achieve that. I think people use the word humane in a broader context to consider situations where there may not be alternative methods of, for example, in an exclusion area that's very remote, there may be horses that are impossible to trap, for example, and taking all those factors into consideration, some people may conclude that in that situation, aerial shooting may be the most humane because other options aren't possible, but that still doesn't mean that that's a humane death. There certainly are adverse animal welfare outcomes. We always have to weigh up, all management methods obviously are going to have some adverse animal welfare outcomes, and that is going to be different across different areas of the park and across different horses, even with the same method. So we have to be really specific about what adverse animal welfare outcomes we're talking about when we're discussing the differences across different methods.
So if that's the case, then, and humane death isn't guaranteed for those horses, how has the RSPCA provided, I guess, context to the SOPs? And how is National Parks and Wildlife Service currently conducting aerial culling if by their own definition the RSPCA's humane deaths aren't being met?
I would assume that the RSPCA are considering that in the circumstances that aerial culling is being used, that there are no more humane alternatives that are possible, but I think that would be questionable, and it's hard to know whether that's the case because the information hasn't been transparent in terms of exactly what regions and what contexts the aerial culling is actually being utilised in.
And clearly, you've done a lot of work in this space, and I think you said you'd done work for National Parks and Wildlife Service previously. Why haven't they asked for your opinion in this matter, given that you seem to be as, at least, as strong a subject matter expert as other people that they've sought advice from?
I can't answer that question.
Okay. Are they perhaps vet shopping so that they can get an answer that they want? Is that conceivable?
It's possible. I have been outspoken about chest shots in particular, that I do not believe that constitutes a humane death, and that's not a personal opinion, that is a fact. So there perhaps could be wariness about using my expertise when there is chest shots involved.
And we know that the RSPCA, and from social media, we know that there's been an investigation already into, and it was detailed in the Daily Telegraph last week, where a horse appeared to have only been shot once in the chest, not in the heart area, but outside the targeted area, and that horse subsequently died, but away from where the area, from where it was shot, we believe. Is the RSPCA conflicted, perhaps, in conducting that investigation? Should the police or should the Animal Welfare League, the other two bodies in New South Wales that are able to conduct animal welfare investigations, perhaps be looking at this matter, and also National Parks and Wildlife Service for their aerial culling?
I guess that, you know, this is a highly challenging area, and it's probably fair to say, with no disrespect to them, that RSPCA inspectors may not have the expertise to really effectively assess those situations. One of the issues with aerial culling and the auditing is it's very, well, it's impossible after the event to really be able to give any assessment as to whether that horse died humanely or indeed how long it took to die. This is partly because of the inherent procedures in how aerial culling is done, because they have the policy of repeated shooting after the first shot to try and ensure that death happens in a timely manner. But that means that many horses will have several shots, and if you're examining the carcasses after the event, you can't tell which bullet ultimately killed the horse. Where there is one shot, you know, it's hard without examining the carcass to know if there was definitely one bullet shot or whether another shot had been missed. It's very hard to say how quickly that horse died, even where the gunshot wound is outside of what looks like the target area. Depending on the trajectory of the bullet, that may still be going into the chest, but there's just absolutely no way of knowing how long it took that horse to die when you're seeing the carcass.
But if it didn't go through the heart, it would have not died instantly.
And it would not have died instantly, no. Maybe quickly, within minutes, is the kind of time region we're probably talking about, but certainly not instantly.
Thank you. The Honourable Bob Neva.
Thank you, Chair. Doctor, I've skimmed through your PhD. Congratulations, by the way, but I haven't managed to get through all 622 pages, but it is a very worthy read.
What have you been doing, Bob?
Reading a PhD thesis. Something that I'm interested in is that the Scientific Advisory Panel itself noted that past horse management plans failed to remove the sufficient number of horses from the park in light of the breeding rate of 17% annually. The risk that that poses from an animal welfare perspective is that high density of horses over greater areas over a longer period of time could result in poor welfare outcomes, largely because horses are pushed out of the woodland areas of the park where food availability is limited. Do you have concerns that if broad-scale horse management is not initiated at the park, that there will then be poor animal welfare outcomes for the horses that remain and the horse that will come down the track?
Yes, I do, and I think the difficulty, though, is that all of the management methods have not been given a fair chance. In the past, the only management method that's been done has been passive trapping, but that hasn't even been consistently done. There was very little passive trapping between 2016 and when trapping was reinstigated on a higher, broader scale after the 2021 management plan came in place. So there's often been quite a lot of delays in instigating management options. So although I do think that that's a concern if there is no management at all, however, we seem to be flipping from one extreme to the other, and in some ways, that's being used to justify broad-scale aerial culling because of the situation that we're in now. But the other management methods haven't really been given a fair chance, in my opinion.
Is it your view that all methods, whether they're lethal or non-lethal methods, have the potential for moderate to extreme adverse outcomes for wild animals, particularly horses, and that it's really a case to reduce those potentially adverse animal welfare outcomes? It's more a case of having the right conditions, the right protocols, and the right skills of people that are implementing those measures, rather than making a generalised statement or view about one method or the other?
Correct. The animal welfare outcomes aren't so much dependent just on the method, but how that method is carried out. All methods have the potential to have severe adverse animal welfare outcomes, and it's variable in whether those can be mitigated or not. With a lot of the other methods, I feel that they can be more effectively mitigated, and National Parks and Wildlife Service has demonstrated the ability to be able to mitigate a lot of the potential adverse animal welfare outcomes with a lot of the other methodologies that are being used. The issue with aerial shooting is that there's much more limited ability to mitigate some of those adverse animal welfare outcomes, and importantly, that the issue with auditing animal welfare outcomes is so problematic. So with all of the other methodologies, what was advised by the Scientific Advisory Panel and what's been being carried out by National Parks and Wildlife Service for the first time, I believe, is monitoring animal welfare outcomes and using that information to improve procedures and policies to further improve animal welfare outcomes. But all of the other methods, it's really possible to very effectively audit animal welfare outcomes, whereas with aerial culling, it's not possible, and so it's really hard. To a degree, they can improve welfare outcomes, which has been done. I think the results of the recent trial, you know, horses were dying reasonably quickly... I think the results of the recent trial, you know, horses were dying reasonably quickly, but they weren't dying instantly. They can't improve on that. That's kind of the best that they can do. And then there was still the problem of not being able to audit at all in areas where the helicopter couldn't safely land. So it's just really inherently problematic to improve it further and to audit it effectively.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Higginson?
Thank you. Thank you, Associate Professor Harvey. Could you? My colleague, the Honourable Bob Nambur, asked about the welfare impacts on large numbers of horses. And I know you talked about that we haven't done enough passive trapping through that period. But could you talk about actually what he was asking, what those welfare impacts are? When you have explosive, large numbers of horses in an area where, particularly if we went into a period of drought, and what those welfare impacts are?
Sure. Well, as, so basically, without any management, horses will be managing their own populations through resources. So effectively, there isn't usually an issue with water supply in Kosciuszko National Park. So we're mainly talking about food supply. So when there is good food supply, reproductive rates will be higher. So in horses, fertility and reproductive success is related to nutritional status. So the reproductive success will be higher when there is good nutrition. When there are more horses and there are poor nutrition, then they will start to have nutritional challenges. And certainly as, you know, we enter periods of drought, then there will be horses that start starving to death. And that can happen over prolonged periods of time. The problem with the current management programme is that when populations of horses are reduced suddenly, that also results in a rebound effect in their reproduction increasing again and population numbers rising rapidly. So although it makes sense to manage the population so that we don't have those adverse welfare outcomes of lots of horses starving to death, if we remove large numbers of horses, the population very quickly rebounds and we get to that situation again. So it is challenging to be able to meet that middle ground.
And so just on that, I've just got two more questions. So on that, when a population is challenged nutritionally, they will literally eat, they will feast on the entire environment until their welfare outcomes start manifesting through nutritional deficiency. Is that kind of how it will play?
I guess it depends by what you mean by feasting on the entire environment. They generally are grazers, so horses will predominantly eat grasses rather than trees and shrubs.
That's what I mean. So they will eat all the resources available and then die of starvation. Is that generally what will happen?
Correct.
Yeah. Can you outline any, to your knowledge, welfare implications for native species of having large numbers of horses in the park?
I think that that's a very broad area. And I haven't conducted studies on other species within the park. It's going to be extremely variable depending on what areas of the park are concerned and different, there's very different species distributions across different areas of the park. And it depends on what species of animal is concerned and whether, in terms of how they may be impacted. I think that one of the problems is that whilst there is some evidence that when there are very high horse densities, that there are going to be negative impacts on the environment and other species. But what we do not know, there is no research to determine what that density is. So whether horses have negative impacts at lower densities or just at very high densities. And that the best available evidence that we have is a recent study that was just published by, last year by Dr. Dave Berman, who was Chair of the Scientific Advisory Panel, where he was looking at not at other species impacts, but broader environmental impacts at different densities of horses. And did show that at lower densities, there were insignificant impacts. And that from a management perspective, in high areas, in high horse density areas, that reducing only moderate reductions in their density was therefore likely to have very beneficial effects on the environmental impact. So I guess we don't have the information to answer your question completely, but that's the best available information that we have.
Thank you. And sorry, I do see that your hand is up, Mr. Lawrence. But we do have to move on because we're quite over time. I understand that there were other questions from the committee. So I think that there will probably be some questions that we give to you on notice, which the committee secretary will be in contact with you with. Thank you so much for coming in today and sharing your expertise with us. We really appreciate your time. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chambers, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Fantastic. Well, I now welcome our next witness. Could I begin by asking you to please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, my name's Andrew Chambers. And I'm the Managing Director of Airborne Logic Pty Ltd. And I'll read that affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do you have an opening statement that you'd like to give?
Very briefly, I wanted to let the committee know that we've recently undertaken an aerial imaging survey of an area of the Kosciuszko National Park with the intent of identifying the horses in RGB or red, green, blue imagery and undertaking a machine learning methodology to attempt to count those horses via an automatic method, but also reviewing that imagery by a combination of visual methods from our team and opening that site of the accumulated photographs to the public for vision as well.
Thank you. Can you begin by letting us know, I guess, the difference between your results and perhaps the results from the National Parks, from their survey?
I can comment on the methods that we've used, which essentially are undertaking a remote sensing project whereby we've used an aircraft with high definition aerial photography to run transects in a similar line perhaps to what may have been used in other methodologies. I'm not overly familiar with the standard methods used by National Parks because it's not something that we do as a business. We're very much a remote sensing and data analytics company, not an ecological survey company.
And how many horses did you find in your survey?
At this stage, over the area that we captured imagery for, which was 21,000 hectares or 210 square kilometres, I think at last check with my team, we were sitting at somewhere around about 250.
250 horses?
Correct.
So that's quite significantly lower than the results by National Parks. Can you just explain, you know, why you've used this different survey method? And how reliable it is? Obviously, any survey method is overall an estimation. But the survey method that you've used, can you just talk about, you know, its reliability? You know, if we're looking at two survey methods which are quite extremely different, to try to help us understand?
Yes. So the methods used in remote sensing have been around for many, many years. Well over 30, 40 years of utilizing aerial photography means to capture large scale imagery over areas. And this process that we've realised is no different to that. I guess the beauty of this method is that it creates a permanent visual record of an area and enables somebody to come back over many times and have a look at that imagery, which is in fact what our team has done over a period of weeks since the imagery was captured, was the ability to look at this both manually by visually looking at the images. Because the imagery was captured at five centimetre detail on the ground, so we have what we term ground sampling distance, which is essentially the size of the pixels on the ground. Those pixels are five centimetres. So that's an extraordinary amount of detail to be able to visually identify things. And we've certainly had no trouble in identifying what we believe to be horses. And those images, which are, as I mentioned, freely available for the public or the committee to have a look at, it's very evident in those images, the difference between horse habit, I suppose, in either lying down or standing up, grazing or head in the air, casting a shadow at times on the ground, very, very obvious that that is in fact a horse. And so from that imagery, we've been able to visually look at the horses that we've seen. And we're now building a machine learning module, which essentially involves training the machine to understand what it's looking at, which requires us to put boundary boxes around each of the horses that we have identified. And again, these are very standard machine learning and the visual identification methods used across the machine learning and AI fields to endeavour around visual identification of objects. And I think this is the point with what we're doing here is that it's somewhat irrelevant, whether it's a horse or whether it's a tree or whether it's a rock. What we're doing here is training a model to look for a specific object. And in this case, it happens to be a horse. And so we've followed that pattern in many other types of work that we do, for instance, whether it be trees or vegetation as well.
And just one last question. Do you believe that this methodology is possibly the most reliable model that we can use to actually estimate the number of horses or anything in the park?
Again, I'm probably not qualified from an ecological perspective to say how reliable or otherwise other methods might be. But I think what we're seeing with the use of this form of imagery is that when matched with machine learning and AI techniques, which are increasingly available across science, it's an incredibly reliable way to do things because you have that accurate record of imagery that one can go back and look at multiple, multiple times.
Thank you. Mr. Higginson?
Thank you. I've just got 100 questions, but I'll just do two quick ones because time is limited. Thank you very much, Mr. Chambers. Your images, which I've looked at in some detail now, excellent images. And they look, they seem that they are very effective in picking up the details of horse tracks and disturbance by horse tracks. Is your work in other areas of Australia, have you seen this kind of density of horse tracks in those, in images similar to those of yours from North Kosciuszko?
No, because we haven't looked in areas where there is other horse activity. So other areas where we would be operating, for instance, wouldn't have horses. They might have, for instance, feral goats or possibly stock, for instance. So it's hard to discriminate between what animals might be causing those tracks.
Okay. And so, and also in your research report, you said you advised against using thermal imagery and that there's no capacity to look under tree cover. Is there, could you explain where that comes from and what the logic in that is?
I think that needs some clarification. We still believe that there is some potential for thermal imaging. And really what was controlled here was the budget, essentially. This was a community-driven project funded by the community with a limited budget. And so what was very difficult for us to do was to fly an area at a appropriate time of day, capture normal RGB, red, green, blue imagery, the imagery that we see as humans, and then also capture thermal imagery that was likely to give the best results over the area that was chosen to be flown. So no different with RGB imagery and thermal. Once you get in under a tree canopy, you're going to have some issues with the image being obscured because of trees and so forth. So it's a timing aspect. It's when you actually fly and capture that data. But it doesn't mean to say that the thermal imagery is not capable of being used. And in fact, I think it would be a complementary dataset should the affordability aspect be there for this community project.
Okay, thank you. So there was no thermal imagery. So no analysis of what was under tree cover was able to be undertaken?
Correct. So we basically flew an area that was over the open plains area. Some of the imagery extended out into tree areas. There's been some observations under those tree areas of horses. But yeah, there's going to be variability, no matter what technique you use.
Thank you. The Honourable Wes Hearn?
Thank you. Mr. Chambers, you may not be aware, but the Invaded Species Council put out a press release this morning, in fact. And they've used your imagery and they've taken images from your website and have sought to define parts of your imagery as proof that there is damage from brumbies in relation to Kosciuszko National Park. I believe the evidence you just gave to Ms. Sue Higginson was that it's impossible to actually determine how those tracks that they've claimed were made. It could be the case that it was made by goats or feral pigs or any other animal. Is that the evidence you gave earlier?
Correct.
Okay. So it would be incorrect for the Invaded Species Council to put out a press release claiming that it demonstrates damage to the park, when in fact that's not the case at all?
Well, I haven't seen that press release, so it's difficult for me to comment on what they've provided. But yeah, I think the tracks that you can quite clearly see in the imagery have clearly been caused by something. Ecological research, I believe, would be required to determine exactly what, some assumptions could be made, of course. And no doubt some of those assumptions would be that they are absolutely horses, perhaps. And that wouldn't be unreasonable. But I think there'd be some additional research required there to determine that authoritatively.
No, I appreciate that. I just thought it was worth clearing up before we have other witnesses that are appearing today. Just in relation to the questions around the ability to, I guess, capture images under tree canopies, et cetera. Is it your understanding, I should probably say, that where there are other survey methods that are employed by, say, National Parks Wildlife Service or another organisation, that the same difficulties in getting images and counts under canopies would be similar in respect of any survey method, unless you are using things like thermal imagery? Oh, you're just on mute at the moment. Sorry, Mr. Chambers?
My apologies. Anything that relies on human vision has the potential for that vision to be obscured by something like a tree. So no matter whether you take that imagery, for instance, as we have done from an aircraft, or whether you view that moment in time from an aircraft, for instance, or helicopter, as I understand some of the methods previously have done, then you're going to have that problem of not being able to see through a tree canopy, for instance. So you're going to have some level of obscured vision.
So it's not unique to your survey method? It's a problem across any visual survey method? Is that, that would be a reasonable assumption to make?
I think so, yes.
Okay. And in circumstances where you have, I guess, a number of horses that you've identified through your survey method, could you provide, and I'm not sure if you can or not, but there's a variance in the number that cited by the department and the National Parks and Wildlife Service in there, I think between 14 and 24,000 horses. It's sort of that, you know, within that ballpark of where they claim the variance of the numbers are. Would you be able to provide some context as to where you believe the numbers and the variance might be? And the possibility that we are perhaps within that 14 to 24,000 variability, given your results?
To be honest, no, I don't think I can because I'm not really familiar with those techniques that are used. To be honest, no, I don't think I can because I'm, I'm not really familiar with those techniques that are used for, for those surveys by national parks. I mean, that variability may be due to a vast range of, of issues. I, I think all I can really comment on is, is what we've physically seen. So far, we've had a lot of sets of eyes go over this imagery. And we're, we're seeing in, in that ballpark of three hundred and fifty horses or so. That'll go up and down a little bit from an individual horse number, I suspect. And once we finish the machine learning component of this, we'll obviously run that model to validate, again, using techniques that are, are used in the machine learning and AI and vision learning systems, highly publicised and, and highly referenced through literature as a way to cross-reference those numbers. So that, that's the sort of level of numbers we're seeing in that area that I.
And we've seen the numbers coming out of National Parks and Wildlife Service, given to us by the Minister in the House, that there's been hundreds of horses in the past few weeks, actually, that have been culled using aerial methods. Do you, would you be able to provide some, some thoughts around if that rate of culling was to continue, what the numbers might look like in six months? Given that they're closing the park now for a six month trial? Well, sorry, six month operation? I should probably be more accurate.
Not really, because I think it's going to be a case of using this technique. What are the numbers that you would, or one would see on any particular day of capturing imagery? And, and that might vary depending on a range of factors like heat in the day, climate weather and so forth, as to whether there were horses out in the open or not.
Okay. My last question is, do you, do you believe we are closer to a number that's of the twenty-four thousand variety or closer to the number that's of a three thousand variety?
I think all I can comment on is the numbers that we've observed in the survey that we've completed. Others are drawing conclusions around what that might mean from a, a density perspective. But we've focused specifically on the task at hand for us and that was to image a particular area and, and count what we could with confidence inside that area.
And if we extrapolated your numbers out through a density to the park size, what would you calculate it out to be?
I'm not familiar with the total area that previous estimates were done over. I've not looked at that level of reporting at all from, from national parks, for instance. So it'd be difficult for me to comment on that, I'm afraid.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Miss Abigail Boyd?
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Chambers, for this project. It's really super cool. And I really enjoyed.
That's a way to describe it.
It is. It's really cool. I enjoyed looking at it this morning. Unfortunately, I, the first, the first horse I zoomed in on was dead. But apart from that, I found lots of live ones as well and that was, yeah, it's just a really good, good programme. Can I just ask, how was that test selection, the test section selected? Why did you choose that one?
So the area that was flown, that two hundred and ten thousand, sorry, two hundred and ten square kilometre area was selected. So I, I should probably reference how we came about doing this work. So we were approached by Mr. Rocky Harvey, who'd undertaken this crowdsourced funding, GoFundMe approach, and asked whether we would be prepared to fly an area and do a count whether that fit within our, our professional expertise. And we said, yes, it would. And we were happy to do that work. And he essentially came to us and said, here's an area that we would like to look at. We've selected this area over a range of high country, open area. And we'd like to have a look at what are the different techniques that you could use. So it was client driven. We essentially were given an area and said, can you fly this area? How much would that cost and how much would it cost to do the machine learning component?
So there's obviously been a lot of disagreement over the total number of horses in the park. If you had the resources, how hard would it be to do an accurate survey using your method of the entire park?
Relatively easy with an unlimited resource because it's really just a case of equipping an aircraft with the appropriate cameras and undertaking a flyover of the full area. I think what we would have to qualify out of that would be, as we've described in, in the early questioning here, is there are going to be areas that are open using RGB or red, green, blue, normal aerial photography techniques, where we can see things and we can see things clearly, unobscured by trees. And then there are going to be areas that are under heavily wooded and sloping terrain, which are far more difficult, obviously, from the perspective of, of seeing things. And that is potentially where thermal imaging would assist that process. So I think if we were talking about an unfettered budget, an ability to fly a significant area, we'd be looking at, well, what, what is that total area and then how many days flying would that require at repeat times? So that there was an ability to compare data and see, well, what was occurring in one area repeatedly over a period of time? And then potentially be using those thermal techniques as well as further support.
Okay, so it, it's, so it's possible. And when we talk about unlimited resources, what are we talking? Like what sort of, you know, if this was to, to satisfy or at least provide some clarity over the total numbers, what, what sort of resources? I don't want to put you on the spot. Maybe you want to come back on notice. But I, I mean, the idea of having an accurate or a more accurate publicly accessible way of finding out how many horses are at least in the open grounds? Because that's obviously the other survey methods have also used that and have the same limitations. The idea of having that would be incredibly valuable. What sort of resources are we talking to get that?
I, I'd be guessing, but I would think somewhere probably in the region of half a million to a million, something like that.
Come on, Bob, put your hand in your pocket, mate.
Thank you.
Getting it from me.
The Honourable Bob Nanda?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Just, you're not putting this count out to be a, a measure of absolute abundance, are you? This is really just a measure of relative abundance in terms of the survey count?
Yes, 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 correct. We've never, never professed for a moment to suggest that this would be the be all and end all. That it was an opportunity to demonstrate that there are techniques available that are consistent with remote sensing, that have the ability to undertake this, this type of work. So we're certainly not suggesting for a minute that this is the, the be all and end all.
Okay, so what's fundamentally missing is the unseen component for the purposes of any count at the, at the national park?
Correct. There's always going to be a problem in working out how one counts underneath the tree canopy.
In terms of the, the methodology that you have used, has it been validated? So I, I know it's relatively novel, but has it been validated? Has it been applied to other known populations with, you know, I suppose, where there is a count with more established methods? And peer reviewed?
Yes, yes. So the remaining part of this project is to report, prepare a, a public report that will circulate through the same site that we put the imagery on. And that report will be peer reviewed. We've engaged a professor from the University of Adelaide, someone that we deal with on other areas of research around remote sensing and image recognition and AI and machine learning work. So that professor is well known from the Australian Institute of Machine Learning based in Adelaide University. And we believe will be very capable of peer reviewing the work that's been done.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Honourable Aileen McDonald, do you have a question?
I, no, I think.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple more questions. Just double check if, if there was any other government members with questions.
No, no, Mr. Nanda's asked some very pertinent questions.
They've both got given the same sheets, that's why.
Thank you.
No, I've got no questions. Thanks, Chair.
Wonderful. Thanks, Stephen. I just want to, you talked about the number of two hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty horses. I just wanted to check, and, and I think the Honourable Wes Fang was asking some questions about, you know, once that's put into a model to actually, you know, create an estimate of the number of brumbies. And I know that you said that you haven't done that yourselves. Do you feel that there's a statistically significant number counted to be able to apply that to a model?
Yeah, it's a very good question. So the number of observations that we have at the moment are certainly challenging from having a, a usable number of training datasets to develop that model. There's some discussion around having some flights over a second area, which would enable some additional validation of numbers by, one would presume, seeing additional horses in that imagery and helping that to, to build the model. So one of the issues that we have at the moment in the work that we're working through from developing that model is that it's a relatively small number from a, a model building exercise. So from a, essentially from a training dataset. When we entered this exercise, we perhaps thought that we might see several thousand horses and that that would be a good number to train the model. But as it's turned out, we're in that ballpark of three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so it's a much smaller number than, than, than expected.
Yes.
My understanding obviously is that the other methodologies used to count the number of animals are very similar. They've got the, some of the same problems with obviously not counting the number of animals under canopies, under trees. However, we've also heard evidence at this inquiry that there's often very few horses in those areas because they do tend to be out in the open areas grazing and they're very unlikely to go under, under tree areas. But obviously, both methodologies that are used don't count the number of horses or the very small number of horses that might be in those areas. Is my understanding is the, the primary difference between your method and the other methods is that you've done that photo imaging. So where you've got along the transect, you've actually taken those photos so that it can be checked and rechecked by multiple people and counted. Whereas the method that was used by National Parks was just a simple crude counting from the helicopter without any kind of double checking. Is that kind of the, the best way of sort of understanding it? That it's that photo imaging that makes yours quite different?
I think so, because really what we're trying to achieve here is to take out human error. Take out that, that moment where you may or may not see something. We still have some level of error in these numbers, as you may have seen in some of the imagery. There are, there are certainly shapes where we were unclear whether it was a horse or not in the image. And we're having to think about whether we might be able to fly anything subsequently at, at lower, even higher resolution. So smaller pixel sizes to help in those situations. But overall, it's about having that permanent record and, and removing the potential for there to be human error.
Yeah. I understand, and you've mentioned it several times, that, you know, that those images are, are available. Why is that sort of transparency so important? I guess that that really helps create a situation where everybody can have a look at it. And I know that, you know, the committee's been invited to have a look and the government's been, you know, invited to have a look at it. It's, is it, is one of the important aspects of this that everybody can see these images? And so therefore, you know, whether that counted, and there will be obviously a range of counting, but where we can create that kind of range and everyone can agree on a number or, or a range within that number?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I think this is, I, I think it's, in any of the work that we do as an organisation and a business, we have some pretty strong ethics around transparency. And, you know, that's come from over thirty-five years of working across environment sustainability and a range of other business areas. And it's, it's really important to our businesses, ethics and transparency. And one of the things that we've found with this type of work is the more that you can open that up and enable there to be scrutiny of it, then, then, then it removes some of those lack of trust factors and enables people to have a clear, a clear and open vision of what's going on. And we, yeah, we're really strong supporters of that type of approach.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any other committee members with any further questions? We do have some minutes left.
I have one quick one. Just going back to the thermal imaging that could be used. Have you got previous experience about the challenges? I'm aware that government efforts to survey for native wildlife through thermal imagery has proved significantly challenging, notwithstanding enormous effort has gone in over the last few months. Are you, are you able to talk about what your understanding is in terms of some of those challenges that we would face in terms of trying to use thermal imaging to understand what is happening under tree canopy?
Yes, we've, we've done work in thermal identification of koalas on Kangaroo Island here in South Australia. And that has also presented some, some extreme difficulties. And a lot of that's got to do with movement of the animal, the, the conditions. For instance, if there's wind blowing at the time, that might blow a, a branch or a tree and obscure the image. Time of day is quite critical and, and also so can weather. For instance, in trying to undertake thermal imaging in extreme heat, backgrounds, heat can, can really impact on the success of that work. So sometimes there's a perfect timing around this. So in mildly cooler weather, for instance, pre-dawn, when the land temperature isn't as coolest. But as a mammal, that heat coming from the mammal is the greatest. There can be the biggest likelihood of a temperature difference between the object that you're interested in and the background, the background temperature. And so those things can, can come into play in terms of the success or otherwise of a, of a thermal survey, notwithstanding the comments earlier around just being obscured by very dense vegetation, for instance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just, Mr. Chambers, the New South Wales Government here has lauded, I'd say, the approach of seeking to use thermal imaging for koalas. The, the Environment Minister's been, I guess, progressing a, a lot of that count issue. So given that the New South Wales Government is, I guess, can, prepared to accept thermal imaging for koalas, would it then seek to also follow that you would then be prepared to use thermal imaging for a, a brumbies count, for example? Would that methodology, would that methodology seem to flow through?
It may do, definitely. I, I mean, I think the interesting thing with using thermal imaging at the heights that we're talking about here with large mammals like horses is that because of the size of the animal, you have a great, a greater capacity potentially to pick up that thermal mass as distinct from a koala.
And that was actually the next question I was going to ask, which is that, given that you, I guess, have had some success with koalas and, and their density and size of, you know, being a very small mammal. With, in relation to a horse, would it not be reasonable to assume that the size and the heat signature of, of a much larger animal like a horse would be easier to detect than, say, a koala?
I, I believe so, yes. And one of our areas of interest as well is to, with the shape recognition and size recognition, pixel recognition and the thermal mass of, of that size of animal, is to start working through whether there's a potential methodology to discriminate between species. So for instance, able to discriminate between a horse and a deer and a pig for argument's sake.
Yeah, so, so that, that, I guess, that logic in the potentially, you know, AI or, or whatever the modelling does can perhaps distinguish. And given that the heat signature would be, you know, the size it would be for a horse, you could actually get quite an accurate, potentially, number out of what you do with a survey area?
Potentially, apart from those, those aspects of the image being obscured. So for instance, being behind a, a large rock or a very dense piece of vegetation.
Yeah, but those, those matters would be, would be, I guess, limited in the number. For the vast majority of the survey detections, you would be able to have a, a, a good read in order. in order to be able to determine the number. Would that be a fair assumption?
Certainly over the open areas and certainly over the the transition areas between thinner vegetation and the the deeper, more sloping areas of vegetation, yes.
Thanks for bringing that up, Sue, it was good.
Thank you. The Honourable Bob Nenavah.
Thank you, Chair. Just interested, Mr Chambers, what other scientists or ecologists or or ecosystem researchers have made use of your model or or similar models to yours?
So there's a range of research being done with remote sensing on these matters through, I'm certainly aware of this work being done by researchers at Flinders University here in South Australia as well. We had contact with Flinders around the koala aspect in being able to get better at using thermal techniques in particular to identify mammals in in vegetation. So there's a range of literature available. Apologies, I can't quite those off the top of my head here and now, but there is certainly a range of literature published where these forms of remote sensing techniques have been utilised for this type of work.
Okay. And you'll have to excuse my ignorance because you might you may have covered it and I've missed it. But is the is the area that you covered in your count the same as the same area as that last conducted for the the Horse Helicopter Index conducted by National Parks?
I believe a part of it. So the the 210 square kilometres that we covered does cover over a part of that survey area that was.
Do you know what proportion of the?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay.
I just want to, sorry, Chair, you're gonna.
No, Mike.
I just want to drill down on the numbers a little bit more. So you detected around 350 horses in, I think it's around 210 or 212 square kilometres. Is that a reasonable number?
That's correct.
And so that would that would provide then that you've, I guess, around 1.6 horses per square kilometre i- in your detection area?
Correct.
Yes, thank you. The, I believe that Stuart Cairns detect, his interpretation was a minimum of 10 horses per square kilometre and a maximum to around 20 per square kilometre. So in that instance, it would seem that the the numbers that you've you've detected fall far short of where Stuart Cairns has, I guess, calculated the numbers to be. So in that respect, how much more area would you need to survey to be able to, I guess, determine a a statistical model of of the numbers across the park to have a more to have a more solid number? Because if the numbers, as we've just gone through, are accurate, where Stuart Cairns is saying there's 10 per square kilometre and there's 1.6, potentially, the, you know, we're down at around 3,000 now.
I think the short answer is the more, the better. In the world of data, it's always the more the more data you can get, the better. So I think ideally, we would want to cover all of those open areas so that there was a fair and frank comparison between the area that we've flown here and other areas that may have horses in, notwithstanding the fact that from any one day, there may there may likely be variability depending on the ambient conditions.
Chair, can I just put one final thing to this? Mr Chambers, does it sound right to you that the area that what we refer to as the Rocky Harvey Count area was 161 square kilometres compared to the Horse Helicopter Transect in 2020, which was 1,299 square kilometres, and the Horse Heli Index Northern Plains Survey, which was 395 square kilometres? Does that sound familiar to you in terms of the surveys that have been undertaken?
If I could take that on notice to check those numbers, because I've I've not seen them, so I've not seen those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, Mr Chambers, for joining us today. We really do appreciate your time and for sharing your expertise with us. There was a question on notice which the committee secretariat will be in contact with you about. There may be further questions as well from the committee, which we will send to your notice as well. But thank you again so much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, committee.
Thank you.
I'll go to you first then.
Oh, no, that's exactly what I'm.
Don't get any ideas, Wes.
I already do. I mean, I already did.
Thank you. I now welcome our next witness. Could I begin by asking you to please state your name, position, title, and to swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is Don, excuse me. My name is Don Fletcher. I'm a retired ecologist. And I think affirmation next. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Did you have a short opening statement that you'd like to make?
Yes, I I would. First, thank you very much for inviting me along. I think animal welfare is very important, and I think the evidence for that is in my submission and my career choices I've made. It it's an area, of course, of higher motion, in particular in regard to horses in Kosciuszko National Park. And what that really requires, therefore, I think, is a very firm focus on evidence as the basis for decisions. So I commend the committee for what it's been doing here. And I think it's up to people like us to lead by example in that way. And sometimes that can be very difficult because it's challenging to explain. A lot of the evidence comes from science. There are many barriers. You have to speak English. You have to understand the language in which scientific papers are written. You have to cope with the maths and statistics. That's not for everyone. The the many of the journals are behind pay wars in spite of the move to open access publishing that's racing ahead now. Much of the important research is from the older era, and you need to be part of a big institution to have access to it. So it's all quite difficult. And I think we collectively need to make a significant effort to improve on that. And in regard to my part in that, if anyone feels like I can help by ringing me up after any, this is all over, any member of the committee or the secretariat, then I'll do my best to help. Just quickly, without anticipating your questions, referring to the notes that I think you've probably received, I would ask that they can be tabled as part of my submission. So in addition to the, I'm seeing, thank you for nodding. And in those, I I talk about the importance of dividing the three counts that are being discussed the most at the moment into two kinds. And and the three counts I refer to, of course, are the Helicopter Line Transect Density Sampling, which has been done most recently by Stuart Cairns and by a whole lot of other people previously. That's one of them. Another one is the Helicopter Horse Index by the Kosciuszko Staff, which ran from 1998, I think it was, to 2021. And that was applied only to the open plains in the north of Kosciuszko, and they explicitly have said is not a population estimate, it's an index, because they didn't believe they were seeing all the horses. And then the third one is the more recent one that we've just heard about. And I think I can help by clarifying differences between those. First of all, any estimate of the population needs to account for those individuals which weren't seen in the method. And all all methods fail to detect some proportion of the animals. And there are, in fact, are very few methods that statisticians and ecologists have developed which have ways to deal with that, see quantifying what you can't see. It sounds like an impossible thing. And one of those is the density, sorry, the distance sampling method, which is used by the Stuart Cairns type survey. So it has that feature built into it. There are a couple of others as well that are in my notes. The other two methods, both of them, that involved aircraft and the northern plains are both indexes. Whether they're applied to the entirety of the national park or some subset, or in this case, the the part of all of the open plains, they are only indexes. And they can be very useful in providing the rate of population increase or decrease and knowing, yes, it's going up and yes, it's going down or whatever it's doing. But they do not give you total abundance. And it's really, there's just no valid way of comparing between methods that estimate absolute abundance and indexes. They're fundamentally different things. What I just talking about, the the staff helicopter horse survey that ended in in 2021, it's been, in my opinion, really excellent. It's provided an excellent index for the amount of horses in that area of the open plains. And I've put a chart in my, the notes that were sent out recently showing that. Important feature about it is that these people are seeing the horses moving. That's quite different than the more recent survey, which is looking vertically downwards from 1,000 metres, and the horses are being picked out of still imagery. And that movement is wonderful for being able to see things. So you can see animals in trees to some degree because they move. And that characteristic is shared by the Helicopter Line Transect Distance Sampling by Stuart Cairns, because they're flying over the trees and the open areas, but they're seeing the animals move. And it makes a huge difference to how many you can pick up. All methods for estimating abundance need to be proven. There's any number of times that people have thought, wouldn't it be a great idea if this really ought to work? Let's try whatever. And it turns out, it didn't work. So whatever it is that we need to use for determining numbers, and they're terribly important to determine, we need a proven method. And in science, that means it's published in some sort of peer-reviewed journal that deals well with that particular topic. And there's any amount of journals that deal with abundance estimation. So in regard to the 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 recent work that that was organised by Rocky Harvey with Airborne Logic, the delivery of that has been, in my opinion, outstanding. The imagery is excellent and the online application that enables you to look at it is astonishingly good. It's remarkable. And the company deserves some commendation for that. My calculation is that, given that they covered an area of 212 square kilometres, to apply that over the whole area of horses in the park would it would be about 1.5 million if it cost the same as this has cost. And I my understanding of the cost is based on Rocky Harvey's online updates, which are very fulsome, and I think he's saying $87,000 for the current exercise. Current exercise covered a bit less than half of the open plains. The open plains have an area of 394 square kilometres. The survey covered an area of 212, including the surrounding woodlands, which he said the method does not see into. Therefore, the area of woodland in that 212 needs to be subtracted in order to understand those numbers. And my subtraction of that is the one that you've heard from this morning. Obviously, invasive species council's been in contact with Miss Higginson here, but I I.
They tend to do that.
I came out with 161 square kilometres there, and it'd be good for Airborne Logic to go and do their own calculation. But given that the method is acknowledged not to see under the trees, we need to focus it on the open part because it it covers both. So it's a really small area, and, you know, to magnify that across the park is a really big cost. But also, there's the issue of how do you develop this method into something that gives you a quantification of the horses that are not seen? And we don't have that. No one's come up with even a kind of wild idea about how to do that, just nothing there. So it it really needs a whole lot more development. I think it's a wonderful method. I think that the future will be eventually that some sort of aerial platform, light aircraft, drones, whatever, and thermal imagery will be the way that we count a lot of wildlife. But we can gauge the current state of development of this by looking at the international literature. There are people all over the world trying to solve problems like this. And what you will see, I believe, if you look at that international literature, is a number of publications where thermal imagery and aerial platforms are used to count animals that live in the open. Jellyfish is a really good example, but a nice Australian example, an outstandingly good one, is to count the flying foxes in a flying fox colony. The animal's right out in the open, and it's a limited area, so the drone can cover the whole area all at once. It doesn't have to deal with the issue of, when you're covering big areas, it's going to take many days, and so the animals can move between the areas. And that's working. But when we look at animals like horses that are on the ground and underneath the trees to some extent, the only example I can find is deer in South America. And there was an exercise with a captive population, and then they deployed the method with wild animals. And in that case, with the known population of, you know, over 100 animals, the the method counted, depending how you applied it, between 50 and 80%. So whatever they do, there's still that component they're not seeing with the thermal imagery. And then they went to deploy it in the open and decided, actually, we're, sorry, deploy it in the more extensive national park area and decided only to do it on open areas. So they provided a figure, but once again, it's not the figure for the entire population. It's only the ones visible in the open at that particular moment in time. That's the really big difference here. We've got, with the Stuart Cairns estimate of $17,000 odd, we've got a method that's applied over more than 2,500 square kilometres of mostly forested country, including an estimate of what was not seen by the observers. And then with the other two indexes, and I'll I'll focus on the the Airborne Logic one because it's the one that everyone's talking about, with the other two methods, we've got something that's applied over a very small area of entirely open country and has no method of estimating the component that was not seen. So anyone with good knowledge of wildlife survey for abundance estimate estimation would look at those things without knowing the results and say, wow, the results are going to be really different, and they are. So it's not a surprise. I urge you to go with the methods that experienced scientists endorse. The new methods might work, and I think they will one day, but they're not working yet.
Well, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I'll throw first to Miss Sue Higginson, and then I'll go to Miss Abigail Boy. Or you're happy for Miss Abigail Boy to go first?
Yeah, you go first, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Fletcher, for your attendance and for giving us the benefit of your expertise. You spoke at the beginning about how tricky this stuff is for a layperson to understand, and I absolutely agree. When I'm looking at this, it's, you know, we do, we do need help interpreting it. But when I look at on the face of it, can you explain to me how, so if we've got the Airborne Logic survey, and we've got the surveys that have been traditionally used, and when we have very similar flaws in both, when it comes to being able to see what's under the trees, for instance, how do we account for these very different numbers on the face of it? When we look at them, and especially when you have something as compelling as When we look at them, and especially when you have something as compelling as the visual photos that we now have that we can also, you can zoom in and you can, you know, help identify horses and that kind of thing, how do we account for that? And why do we go, well, these are all flawed, but we're still going with the traditional rather than looking at the new evidence that has come forward?
Well, there are several reasons, I'm just have to marshal my thoughts a little bit. I guess the obvious thing to get out of the way first is that the two indexes are both only looking at open areas. And there aren't those open areas everywhere in the park, they're quite restricted. So we've got three hundred and ninety four square kilometres of open plains in the north of the park, but the horses are also, as well as in the northern survey block, the horses are being surveyed by the park surveys in four areas, not just one. And most of that is forested country. So the two indexes have been run in an extremely biased sample, and I'm sure people involved would acknowledge that because, you know, they knew that that was all they could do. You know, that's, that's where their method is limited to. So it's only been done in the open, but we need to know about horses in the entirety of the landscape. So that's one reason. Another reason, much of the following is probably speculative on my part, and I think to really know the answer, we would need to do the things in some comparable way, so run the two together, you know, at least in the same season. Whereas the rangers have chosen to do that horse helicopter index thing that ended in twenty twenty one, they've chosen to do that at the time of year when they felt they would see the most horses in the open. This has been done six months apart from that, and I don't know because I'm not one of them and I haven't talked to them about it, but I'm guessing that they wouldn't do it at this time of year because they'd expect to see fewer horses in the open and more in the trees. That could be a reason. The balance between, you know, what proportion are under trees and what proportion are in the open. Another reason is the difficulty of seeing the horses in the imagery when the background colour isn't contrasting, and I've got an example of that in my notes. And in the notes, there's a photo taken from the airborne logic imagery and it shows, I think it's seven horses that you can easily see and have been counted. And if you switch on the, if you look at the thing yourself, there's a button there, you can switch on which ones have been counted and you'll see those seven have been counted. There's an eighth horse there which I've identified with an arrow. I think it's probably a horse, but if I was them, I'd be cautious about counting that because it's under the shade of a tree, it's in open grassland, but at the time of day when the aircraft was over that part of the plains, it just happened, the shadow of the tree covered that horse.
But that, that's the benefit of their programme though, is that you can as a member of the public then identify that and say, I think this is a horse.
Yeah, but maybe no one can tell. And you heard Mr Chambers saying things about the second survey with better pixel resolution that would help, another aircraft following behind the first aircraft would also help because you would see where the horse moved, things like that. So there's all sorts of refinements, but I'm just running through a list of why there might be these differences. Another difference clearly is the horses that have been removed from there, but we need to look at the national parks figures and see how many that is, it's not, so they were counting three thousand six hundred and something, I think, in twenty twenty one, they haven't removed that many from the open areas. So there have got to be other reasons as well as the removals. So I talked about visibility on the, in the, for animals in the trees, visibility in the open and time of year are perhaps the reasons, but to really know, you need to do the research.
So I guess then, so if we're looking at, so obviously there's been many, many surveys undertaken under the past however many years using the sort of traditional method, should we call it?
I think the answer is there've been eight surveys, only eight, it's not a lot.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Using the helicopter line transect.
Yeah, no, no, my point is that clearly we have a lot of that, but we've only got this one example from airborne logic, so, and it's, as you say, it's only one part instead of four sections of the park. So, you know, obviously it's not, they're not equivalent in that sort of rigorousness and, I don't know what the word is in a science perspective, but we have just this one example. However, and I understand that the points about, you know, seeing under the trees and stuff is, is the same for both types of, of survey. But does the, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, does it, this massive difference in, in the numbers counted, does that not give us some, I guess, doubt over the previous surveys? Or does it not, is it, accepting that this is just this one survey, if we were to then employ this technique across the whole park, do you think it's logical that we would get a different number?
It's certain that if you deployed this method across the entire park, absolutely you would get a different number than the line transect distance sampling surveys because they are designed to estimate the proportion of animals not seen by the observer, and this method doesn't do that.
Okay.
So it's absolutely guaranteed that this will produce a lower count.
So, okay, that's really useful. So then the number that the, the other survey method uses that extrapolates out to be the numbers that we can't see, does that have a base number of what they've observed in the open that we can then compare to this?
Not as far as I can see. So contrary to, there is some stuff on Rocky Harvey's website saying that Stuart Cairns observed that he saw something percent, I think it was eighty six percent in the open and whatever else that is, not in the open. And then he's assumed that the Stuart Cairns open is his open, i.e. the open plains.
Yeah.
And I haven't talked to Stuart Cairns, I probably should have, but I think he's-
That's what we need really to compare like for like.
Yeah, what he's doing, he's looking at a completely different scale, that's the first thing to comment, that Stuart Cairns is looking at each observation of the horses that are counted and assigning them to either open or under trees. And there are little patches of open everywhere through forests, and I think a lot of that is what he's talking about.
Yeah.
And so they are looking at a different, I mean, and the three ninety four hectares of open plains is looking at like satellite imagery sort of level, they're completely different scales and therefore they're seeing the country in a different granularity and you can't take that percentage from one and apply it to the other.
Okay, but we don't have that data then from Stuart Cairns one to actually be able to compare like for like.
Well, you can't compare like for like anyway, the methods are just not compatible in that way.
Sorry, for the, for the numbers of open, for numbers of horses in open areas-
Right.
-that are being identified under the airborne logic versus the number of horses in open areas that have been identified using Stuart Cairns method, that's what I'm talking about.
Look, I've got, I've got a map that answers that to some degree in these notes on that first figure one, if you are able to turn to that.
I don't have it.
And it, it has brown lines which are my crude representation of the Stuart Cairns transits. And the pink area is where the airborne logic photos come from. So you would, I don't think you'd do it, I'd be able to do it unless Stuart Cairns GPSed every observation, because what we need is just the parts of his line that are going across that open area.
But without, without that data?
Yeah, I don't think, I suspect that doesn't exist.
Right, but without that data, how are we able to say that the current airborne logic numbers are not going to lead, even if we use them to then extrapolate back into this Stuart Cairns sort of way of doing things, aren't going to give a more accurate figure?
Well, the key thing is that the airborne logic method lacks the ability to count the horses under the trees.
And that's the evidence, but, sorry, just because I'm trying to get it from a, from a layperson's perspective, but the Stuart Cairns one also can't, they're extrapolating, aren't they, to what's under trees?
No. So he is observing some animals under trees and, as I said earlier, the fact that they move makes a big difference to your ability to do that, it's, it's going to be much better than the, when you're looking at a still imagery from an air photo. And so he does have estimates for, for both areas, yeah.
Okay, so that's, but you say estimates?
Well, it's all an estimate because, I mean, no one's literally counting every animal, it's not possible.
No, but they are under the airborne logic one, that's the point.
Ah, they're counting every animal-
In the open.
-that was on the open at that time of year, at that time of day, yeah.
Yeah, which is not what Stuart Cairns method does, they're extrapolating.
Well, the Stuart Cairns method also has real observations of a number of animals.
Yeah.
But they use the distance sampling method to calculate from that how many were really there.
Yeah.
I tried to explain that in my original submission, there's a whole section about distance sampling and it's got two charts in it that show you the decline of sightings with distance away from the observer.
If we could take, if we could combine the approaches and use the airborne logic data for the open areas and then apply some sort of extrapolation using the Stuart Cairns method, do you think we would still get a different number to what is done just with the Stuart Cairns? I'm trying to work out what the, the benefit of having this real visual data in front of us is, this publicly available, does it have potential to then tell us a better?
Okay, a candid remark then, is probably in our interest, I think the value of the imagery that's there is what it shows you about vegetation.
Yeah.
And it opens a whole new possibility that as far as I know, hasn't been talked about, but I mean, the national parks people might have done this, I don't know, but it occurred to me that perhaps there's a cheap way here, that they can monitor vegetation recovery where they've removed horses, because, you know, if you do any wildlife manipulation, it should be because you're going to benefit something else and ultimately the proof of the pudding for any operation like the horse removal is, are the other things benefiting? So, I mean, measuring the vegetation in the horse removal areas is a good thing to do. Maybe this is a cheap way of doing that, but having said that, I'm not a botanist and the botanist is going to say about my suggestion what I said about the other stuff, where is this proven in the scientific literature, Don? And I'm not a botanist, I don't know, but it's astonishing to look at because you can see places where if you look at Google Earth and things like that, there were bushes and those bushes are gone in the newer, more detailed imagery, you can see horse, what do they call them, roll pits, you know, the barrier areas that horses make and all sorts of stuff like that. In terms of its value for managing horses, I think it's less than its value probably as a measure of, you know, vegetation and so on.
It could be for both, right? Like you could have-
Well, yeah.
It's worth investing in because then we could actually-
She's your colleague, be respectful.
No, I've just got to leave early, that's all.
Well, you shouldn't leave early, you should be-
Sorry, I'm being interrupted here, sorry.
I'll let Miss Abigail Boyd finish her sentence and then we'll move to Miss-
Thank you. So it's worth, what I'm trying to tease out is whether or not it's worth investing in, in this sort of technology for both reasons, for measuring the impact on the ecology as well as getting more accurate numbers, because the more evidence we have, the, the less politics is taken out of the debate and we can focus on the science.
All right, so another candid comment then, if I were the queen in charge of the horses or something, and I wanted to get best value for my dollar to estimate horse abundance, I wouldn't use any of the methods that have been used. I would use, I suppose it's a variant of helicopter line transect sampling that is called double, double sampling or double observer. So it's a mark recapture helicopter line transect survey and there is one example of it having been done actually in Cozy Osco National Park, and the paper is in my references by Lake, L double A K E and Dawson and Hohn, I think, two thousand and seven, I think. And that is really the, the best method for this sort of situation that is currently-
And that's the one that Claire Gali is advocating for, isn't it?
Big pardon?
Is that the one Claire Gali is advocating for?
No. What Claire Gali is advocating, I believe, what she talked to, I saw her transcript and so forth, what she was talking to the committee about was, yes, mark recapture, but a different thing, and there are two examples of that, one of which, incidentally, is also from Cozy Osco National Park and it's by Michelle Dawson, who's one of the key people who's done the other method. And she did it in Bogong High Plains in Victoria deliberately because it was a small population. And they, it's in my submission described there, they counted, I think fifty odd horses on one day and they counted seventy odd horses on the other day and from that they calculated eighty to ninety horses were in the area, because mark recapture is another one of these things that estimates the proportion you did not see. But they also said, this method is only suited to very small populations, not to the whole Cozy Osco type thing. And they identified a number of deficiencies of what they'd done that would need to be addressed to make it a sort of useful method in the future. There's another paper as well where the same thing's been done with horses in the USA, but it's, it's using plain ordinary mark recapture where you actually have to identify individual horses and the next time you see them, you have to recognise them reliably and nobody can do that with the kinds of numbers. Again, I think that's something that, as I say in the submission, that might change in the future with computer based analysis of the individual animals on videos, currently we're not doing, but artificial intelligence is very capable of picking up differences between individuals and that's something that might happen, but I suspect it's probably going to be very hard to apply to thousands of horses, it's probably something that might work with hundreds of horses even, so, so that's different. The one I'm talking about uses that kind of conceptual thinking of a marked group and a recapture applied to the Stuart Cairns type observation. And you do that by having two people seated in the aircraft on the same side and they're both recording without being able to hear the other into a multi-channel recorder. And they simply just record, I see six horses here, and the next one actually sees five horses or seven horses or whatever. And you're using that instant change as the basis for the mark recapture algorithm to work on. So you've got, from the difference between the group size, you've got a mechanism of using the mark recapture to look at what wasn't seen in that way, and from the distance out from the aircraft that they're recording and the detection function, you've got another measure of how many are not being seen. And it gives, by that combination, it gives better results. And the reason they're not doing it is an aircraft issue, so they, not long after that, a new rule was brought in, they have a, now have a safety observer in the front seat. So with the sorts of aircrafts that are readily available, helicopters that are readily available to the park service in, in Cozy Osco, there isn't a suitable aircraft where you can have people seated one behind the other. So they're using the traditional distance sampling method, but clearly it would be an improvement to go to the mark recapture distance sampling.
Thank you, Miss Hickenson?
Yeah, thank you, I've only got a minute and I've got to run and I apologise for that.
Tantrum.
Dr Fletcher, the, thank you very much for your notes that helped the committee understanding the difference between the sample, the methods. Is it fair to say at this point that we really are looking at the difference, and I know this sounds so cliched, but it really is about the difference between apples and oranges at this point, because there's a bunch of different approaches, and I think you described it as the difference between the idea of trying to ascertain absolute or total abundance and indexes, and that the airborne work that has been done, which I agree with you, is incredibly beneficial to look at the condition of the national park, that the problem that we face with that is that, to all of our disadvantages, horses don't stand still for two weeks on end while we get a proper sample. Is there, is there something that you can say further to what you've already- Um, is there, is there something that you can say um further to what you've already said that would provide the committee any confidence that what we've already got in terms of the population estimates, what we're working on, can literally be improved between it it over the period of the next twelve months, which is what the government has committed in terms of trying to reduce horse numbers to achieve the conservation outcomes the state is legally committed to?
Hmm, that's a hard question and it's one that in my submission, I suggested there should be a working group applied to it and of people more eminent than me in this field. Um, so it's a hard question, but um first of all, and 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 really, this is partly an answer to Miss Boyd's question. One thing I omitted was that by only counting part of the open plains, the airborne logic survey has the significant question over it of what if the horses have moved between the plains, they can go backwards and forwards. We know they do that and you can have a look in the notes I sent at the difference between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty. The horses are in completely different places in the two different surveys that the staff did. And there was a lot of disturbance, oh, sorry, that's another reason I forgot. If you look on their imagery, see for yourself, along the road, there's a whole lot of excavations and things along quite a number of the roads in the park. And there are two things, two reasons for that. One is they're doing road grading and you can see a machine at work. And the other one is they're putting in power lines for snowy hydro. And there's lots of disturbance and in in the notes, I've got a photo of a guy standing near a track excavator and whatever. Well, maybe, we don't know, you know, but maybe that affected the numbers of horses. And it might be just really unfortunate though they chose a date when all that was happening. Um, so that's yet another, that's about five reasons I've given you for why why there could be differences. Going back um to um Miss Higginson's question, if I understand it correctly, I actually think that some kind of index over the open plains has some value. Because probably um you can do it reasonably cheaply. And certainly that ranger thing was very cheap compared to the airborne logic thing. And it's given great results. So it would be really nice to have that again now, compare twenty twenty one with the situation now since they've been doing some some shooting. And you could run that, you know, whenever the conditions were suitable. So I think it'd be worth keeping that going, but you really still need the helicopter line transect type thing. You can't escape it, no, no. Yes, it'd be nice to, it'd be great to improve that um by putting more money into it, which means, you know, more flying time. Because you can, with that method, it allows you to do multiple passes over the same area. So they could put the transects, you know, a hundred metres apart of whatever and keep on flying it depending on the budget. Um, and they could use the the um the mark recapture impro- variant of the method as well. So there's, there's a lot of improvements that could be done if the money's there. Um, but the main one I would suggest should be the helicopter line transect based method. And if you can run the index of the open plains, do it also on the open plains in the south of the park. Because there are other open areas that could also be done. They might be actually handy, quicker, more responsive indexes as well.
And that's for extra money.
You said you had to run off, Sue.
Can I just? Order, sorry, sorry, we do only have, we've just, sorry, Miss Higginson, sorry, we've got six, Miss Higginson, sorry. Order, we've got six minutes left and we've only heard questions from the Greens so far, so I will go to the Honorable Wayne.
Thank you. Um, uh, Doctor Fletcher, um, you said a little bit earlier, and I wrote the quote down, um, that we should have people more eminent than you involved in uh determining these uh count methods. What did you mean by that?
There are scientists um whose names we can harvest from the literature on this kind of stuff who um are, you know, extremely experienced and smart and published lots of literature on it. Um, and I'm sure we could tap in to, when I say we, I don't necessarily mean this group, but their expertise could be brought to bear.
Hmm.
And indeed, from rumours I've heard, I think perhaps that's actually been happening just recently with NPWS, by the way.
Okay. Um, would that be because you would be somewhat conflicted because of your involvement with the Invasive Species Council?
I don't think so, um, my involvement within, I mean, obviously I'm not paid.
Well, I was going to ask that, they say, they they say that they engage you. And I've I've had a look through some of the previous um uh releases from the Invasive Species Council where they say that you've been engaged, um, I guess in a in a corporate sense, to provide advice to the Invasive Species Council. Have you never been paid by the Invasive Species Council?
No, I haven't ever been paid by the Invasive Species Council or anyone else involved with the Cozy Osco horse issue. Um, I retired in twenty sixteen and that was when I was working for ACT Government. And yes, it was interested in the horses, but it wasn't, you know, part of this, no, so no, nothing like that at all.
Mm hmm.
Um.
So you've been a long time volunteer then for the Invasive Species Council, is that a?
That's correct, they approached me um in, I I think they've probably been, to be candid, they've been pretty um careful in in sort of the ethics of how they've approached me. And it's been entirely up to me whether I respond. And they've asked for advice on an issue and it's um, I've been happy to provide that where I can because I know it's hard to get.
Would that caution, do you think, perhaps um have flowned, flowed through to putting out a press release this morning uh featuring you and commentary that you've made in relation to uh the airborne logic information?
Sorry, can you remind me what words it says that you're thinking of?
Uh, well, there's a invasive species council press release that they've put out today and they cite you. Um, and they've, they say former ACT government ecologist, Dr. Don Fletcher, who is giving evidence in the New South Wales Parliamentary Inquiry today. And then goes on to uh talk about some of the comments that you've made. But uh, given that you, this was put out earlier this morning, um, you've obviously given comment and uh advice to the invasive species council on this very issue before appearing this inquiry, given that they've sought fit to put out a press release with your name on it.
I've passed a copy of my notes that I passed to this committee um to the invasive species council, that's correct.
Okay, and so in that respect then, given that you've been, uh, I guess, engaging with them prior to uh your appearance today, does that not, you know, you've said that they they act in a careful manner. Would that not be a less than careful way of um not seeking to be conflicted?
I'm happy to provide my notes to anybody um that.
But you did that, but you did this pre- prior to appearing and you did it to the invasive species council. And they sought then to um put out a press release seeking to uh to get ahead of what they would say the images that airborne logic have um uh produced indicate. Um, but we've heard already that the, it it's it's not possible to to make that determination um from the imagery that the invasive species council said it can. Now, would that not?
I'm sorry, can you clarify that last remark for me? That you said something's not possible, I'm not sure what's not possible.
Well, airborne logic themselves have said that it's not possible to attribute the um the 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 marks in the photographs that the uh that the invasive species council suggest are attributable to the Bromby's. Um, yet that evidence has been put, well, sorry, not that evidence, that press release was put out this morning carrying your name.
Yep, okay, got it now, sorry, took me a while to understand the question.
That's all right, I like, I like to have a long lead in just to sort of, you know, draw you into my way of questioning.
Good question, Mr. Fain.
It's a great question, I tend to do that.
The answer, I think, is um that no other animals have been detected in the survey. Not even one single pig, sambar deer, fallow deer. These are known to be in the area, there've been quite a bit of public um discussion about them. And none of them are visible and there are no goats. As far as I'm aware, there are no goats for quite a long way around there, but there are no goats in the imagery, more importantly. Everything that was counted in the imagery, and I think the correct number is three hundred and thirty seven from the latest update. And we heard two fifty and three fifty, but I think the actual number is three thirty seven. Those three hundred and thirty seven, it's my understanding, are all horses. No one's suggesting any of them is something else. So I think the inference that the lines on the ground are mostly due to horses is not too unreasonable.
But it's an inference, isn't it?
It's, it's a kind of fair but, you know, arbitrary but reasonable sort of thing in that you can't say there isn't a whole lot of pigs under the trees that come out at night and make those sort of tracks. But um, you know, there's not really good reason for thinking that might be the case.
Are we not perhaps cherry picking though, that, you know, there are certain animals that 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 are, we, as you rightly said, we know exist in the area, um, but because they're not counted in the um the photos, they can't have made those tracks. It has to be the horses that you've, yet when we're flipping it around and looking at the numbers, um, we can't count the ones that are under the, you know, because we can't count the one that it completely discredits it. It seems to be cherry picking, you seem to be cherry picking the facts to suit the narrative that you want to progress forward. And I understand that, that's the way that the invasive species council works, but I think that needs to be put on the table.
No, no, that's not the case, a bit of a misunderstanding crosswise there. Um, it's, it's assumed that there are horses, pigs and both kinds of deer under trees. Um, the only horse, the only animals that have been seen in the imagery are horses, um.
I'll let uh the Honorable Bob Nambur ask some questions because he's a, he's a real expert in ecology.
That was an unnecessary comment, but thank you, I'll throw out Honorable Bob Nambur.
Um, doctor, I I ask this question as someone that does trust the scientific methodology behind the helicopter line transect distance sampling method. I don't profess to be an expert at it, but I trust the science like I do trust the science on a range of other issues that I'm not an expert on. But I do ask as a layperson, a significant barrier um for people, um, for laypeople on that count method is a lack of understanding or acceptance as to how there could be more animals than people can see, number one. And number two, how sampling methods can estimate populations with such a degree of accuracy? So when you look at um, when you look at, you know, the ratios such such as getting a an estimated count of fifteen thousand um wild horses from um, you know, thirteen hundred that might have been observed, people are naturally very dubious um about about that. And then when you have a projection or 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 width of confidence intervals where you say they're between fourteen thousand to twenty five thousand with a ninety five percent confidence interval, again, people, laypeople struggle to understand that. Could you, for the purposes of an explanation for laypeople, explain why distance sampling particularly um is a reliable predictor of of um population estimates?
Because the ans- the answer about why, excuse me, the answer about why distance sampling is reliable is that skeptical people, large numbers of them, who have invested a lot of time and effort in the estimation of wildlife abundance, have tried it and tried other alternatives and um believe in it and have had papers published in papers, papers that are reviewed by skeptical um peers. Um, and it's been tested on known populations. So I think people have done all sorts of weird and wonderful things. There's one study where someone went around and dropped bricks on the lake, bit of a lake even, and then went across it in transects in something looking down into the water so that you couldn't see them all. Um, and the the, you know, found that the number estimated by distance sampling was um um accurate. There is uncertainty about it and that's indicated by those wide confidence intervals. Um, it's one of those really hard things about ecology that when you're dealing with large open areas with high numbers of animals, we just don't have the ability to come up with super precise estimates. There's no technology on the planet that does it. Whatever you do has big confidence interval, and that's another comment I should have made, by the way, that neither of those two indexes has any confidence intervals around it. So they, they haven't.
Airborne logic.
The airborne logic method or the the staff helicopter horse index, neither of those has, there been a confidence interval estimated. And and the current way of doing the method doesn't let you do it. So there's an unknown amount of uncertainty around both of those and that's a serious problem, that should be addressed. Um, yeah, so it's very hard to provide that confidence, um.
It's the nature of any statistical modelling that you're not going to have, you know, a complete, you know, an unambiguous degree of accuracy. Um, but what what confounds people, uh, I suppose, the ratios and the intervals. Um, I just want to come back to a point that you just raised. Because again, as a layperson, the thing that would give me a higher degree of confidence is if the application of distance sampling has been compared to actual counts. Um, and you can ostensibly assess um the accuracy um by comparing a total count of a known population to what the distance sampling model has come up with. So you say that has taken.
Oh, yeah, that has certainly been done quite a number of times. And I picked, I think, three examples out of, you know, a number of others I was aware of that I've put into my original submission, um, where people did, you know, people did some other thing to find out how many were actually there and then ran the distance sampling method over that to compare it.
And they've been?
And they've, they've been acceptably close, yeah.
Is that in the context of wild animals?
Yeah, I'll give you one I was involved in, um, so um in five reserves, we used three methods to estimate the number of kangaroos. And to be candid, I was expecting to get, you know, this method's always a bit high and this method's always a bit low and this one's in between type of result. Um, the methods were pellet counting, so that means counting the dung of the kangaroos. And there are standard methods for doing that, it's a quite expensive method because there's a lot of work needed. Um, the next one was distance sampling, but but on foot, not aerial, so it was walked transects. Um, and um the third one was a total count. We picked these reserves because they were ones where we could kind of surround it with people and have people walk in and count every kangaroo head count, then do it again, then do it again. And it was only accepted if all three of the attempts to do that were within ten percent. Otherwise, we said there's something wrong with our method. That's one of the strengths of replication, which we haven't seen with the two indexes. Um, you can throw it out if it's giving you rubbish. So with those five reserves, we had those three methods. And the results were that um the confidence, ninety five percent confidence intervals were overlapping for all three methods in all five cases. And across the five, there was no one method that was consistently the higher or the lower, they were just random. So what we said was that means statistically speaking, they are the same. So there's one example, but that's from personal experience. But um there are quite a lot of other ones, um, quite a lot of overseas ones, one or two Australian ones.
Could you perhaps on notice, the most analogous examples to the situation we find at Cozy Osco, could you perhaps provide those to the committee on notice?
Yep. Chair, I know we're a bit out of time, but I just wanted to clarify one thing. Uh, Doctor Fletcher, you said earlier in your evidence that you knew that the invasive species council had given Miss Sue Higginson some information. Can you just expand on that and explain to us how you knew that?
Because the number was the same as my number, the one sixty one square kilometres.
Okay, so.
It's unlikely that if someone else estimated it, they came up with exactly the same number.
So, so you've given information to the invasive species council before your appearance today. Miss Sue Higginson's obviously been given information from the invasive species council that's come from you. And what you're saying is, is that um that, you know, that's obviously, there's been information flow. Have you spoken to anyone else, like, from the invasive species council? Did you talk to Miss Sue Higginson before you appeared today?
A big pardon?
Did you, did you talk to the invasive species council or Miss Sue Higginson before appearing today?
Yes, I did, I spoke to Jack Goff. I didn't speak to Miss Higginson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, well, thank you um for coming in today. I know we've gone over, so thank you for um being very generous with your time. Um, because there's so many questions, there might be some more questions uh from the committee to you on notice, um, which the secretary will be in contact with. the secretary will be in contact with you about. And thank you again. Um, the committee will now break shortly for morning tea and will return at 12pm.
I can hear you, Emma.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, I now welcome our next witness, taken care into the aerial shooting of brumbies at Cozumbe National Park. Could I ask our witness please to state their name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is Lynette Sutton, I am founder, advocate and I have worked in the field of wild horses for the past fourteen years. Under oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, and did you want to start with a short opening statement?
Um, I did type up, I hope it's not too long, I did type up an opening statement, oh my god. So to the chair and members, firstly, I'd like to say I do not have any academic entitlement. However, I do have a life experience in horsemanship and fourteen years dedicated to the wild horses and the mammonment or lack thereof. If we can start correctly by identifying the horses and use and not use the term feral horses, rather than a title given by government agencies and the likes of ISC and the Greens to install an image of something undesirable. I have been researching the term feral and whilst over a hundred and fifty years ago the escaped horses could be titled with that description, the horses we are discussing today have not been domesticated and over a period of free living without human intervention have retained the historical DNA alleles from their ancestors. So if we can address the species as wild horses, we would then be referring to them correctly. Over fourteen years, we have worked to engage a humane management strategy and engaged with park staff and tried also to engage with ministers to only have months and weeks of work used as one might say as toilet paper. Why have all brumbie advocates been ignored? Why has funding been in abundance for the opposition of wild horse management only to be used for eradication programs? Ancestral DNA testing has been going on for over fourteen years with the late Richard Crispin initiating the Australian horses to be included in the world wild horse database. The testing has shown remarkable genetic viability with minimal inbreeding evident. The genetic lines are that of many horses of the world's rare breeds list. The strengths evolved in our wild horses in many ways such as bone structure and survival are in retaining the markers that are no longer in our country. Again, no funding has been brought with to any wild horse advocate or rehoming strategy. All work's been done with funds raised by the Australian population. The saving of wild horses, humane management, ensuring they will be a part of the Australian way of life has been solely funded and performed by Australian community. In these times of eradication programs, many good citizens have tried to make a positive impact on the lives and sustainability of wild horses, some stepping on a very shaky limb. Why? Because the need to save wild horses is a part of their heritage and the means for most to do that task are not there. It's a limb that requires a lot of work and foresight to do it properly and to have the very best outcome possible for the wild horse and the person who has taken on this task. While I would like to see funding to ensure those who have heart to assist discipline wild horses and also care for our amazing national park is available. Every single Australian cares about the environment. We also care about the very animal that helped in a large way, not only to establish this great country, but also to defend shores. We also state that the way forward must be sustainable for its living as they have done and positive management be ongoing throughout the future. When the only managers of the wild horses and general population were excluded from involvement in Cozumbe National Park, the government took on an area of land they could not manage. It is obvious to all who visit the park and spend time observing the demise of many attributes that should be enhanced. Ski fields progress to accommodate the needs of mankind should not be above the needs of park inhabitants. We pray for common sense in the way forward and the eradication programs cease and future management set forth to ensure all stakeholders are considered on the road forward. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms Sutton. I might start with a couple of questions myself and then throw to the rest of the committee.
Um. Certainly.
Thank you. Um, I've asked this question today already, but I just thought it was an important one, particularly given that you also talk about rehoming strategies. Um, one of the witnesses that we'd heard from previously described rehoming as cruel and said that aerial shooting is less cruel. Um, I just wanted to get your response to this in regards to the welfare of horses that are being rehomed.
Um, I, I think on, on, in a reality sense, um, if the playing field was even, so there was funding for positive management as well as funding for eradication programs, a lot of, well, some of the issues mentioned by Mr Coleman would be avoided. Um, rehoming, I've worked with quite a few different park rangers. I've worked with Victorian parks and New South West parks. The men are professional, the work they do is, you know, i- i- it's a very tough job. And the animals do suffer some stress, but they settle very quickly. And anyone who has anything to do with horses knows that you can take a domestic horse out of its environment and take it somewhere else and it takes some time for it to settle. The horses are very resilient, they have coping mechanisms that, you know, it's just amazing that they can be, you know, stressed at the trapping yard, travel calmly. I have lots of videos on my page of horses that I have transported myself from the wild to the sanctuary. There's also videos of horses transitioning after a day or two in the holding yards where they've had their treatment, being released out into the paddies and they adapt very, very well. It's a matter of, um, funding for most to achieve a successful outcome, but there is no funding, none whatsoever.
And so what sort of funding packages do you think should be available, um, to ensure that, you know, that, that some of these rehoming, um, efforts can be significantly expanded?
Well, if you look at, if you look at, I mean, I've been doing a bit of research this way. Invasive species get twenty-nine percent of funding from the government for their programs, let alone other grants and so on. We get zero, absolute zero. So the work that we do is, is funds raised by the general public. So it, it's, and it's ongoing. So for every single person, for us, our, our feed budget is forty thousand a year. We raise that ourselves with the help of followers and general public. We have rehoming programs, we have strategies, we have documentation, we offer a life security for whatever horses we step up and home. That takes funding and we're very lucky that we have a, a good following. We have a great committee, we have a great accountant, that we can achieve the goals that we have with only rescued two hundred and fifty wild horses in the past fourteen years. But that's because we have a boomerang policy. So when the animal becomes, um, at risk for any reason, the rehomer's situation changes or whatever, the horse comes back to us. We have limited land, so, you know, it's not about the government giving us money ev- every year. It's about allocating land so that people can do the task. Um, a lot of horses don't make rehoming, um, they're not suitable, they've been too long in the wild, they're aged. Some of them train well, some of them don't, so they need a life sanctuary. The, um, we have tourism, we work with the children from the special school who come and do, um, situations and work with the wild horses. Um, there's no funding for that, that's all raised by the population. So we're asking not, not for, you know, funding lonely, nearly, but let's be realistic here. Let's give us twenty-nine percent of a, of a budget, you know, uh, make us earn that money, make us accountable for that money. You know, where is that money going? Um, what are the benefits? Because to say that rehoming is not successful, you can't say that. It's an uneven playing field, we have no funding. We can only do what's humanely possible by support of people in the, um, community. And that's how most rehomers are working.
Thank you. And I've just got one other question. Um, I'm also hearing that summary homing groups, um, are actually being ignored, they're, they're reaching out, they're trying to, um, offer homes for brumbies. I'm just wondering if you're hearing the same, um, and if you have any insight on, onto this.
Um, it, it, again, it comes back to funding, it comes back to, you know, um, you can't put, um, you can't set someone up to do something successfully without the tools needed to do that successfully. And getting those tools is a struggle. It, it's, you know, it's something that every single one of us, you know, go through those thoughts, um, of how are we going to do it? Um, we don't get, um, consideration. I can speak for myself, I sent out fifty registered letters with a management plan with all the foresight possible to members of parliament. I got one reply, one acknowledgement, and that was from Kate Washington, who was at the time the, um, shadow minister for the environment, who took it to Matt Keen. There was never another word about that, it's not table, it's not looked at. How can we make the management of the national park protect the environment and also protect what's important to a lot of the community is the very animal that's existing there? So, you know, to say that aerial culling is the only way. I mean, fourteen years, fourteen years I have been at roundtables, writing plans, government meetings, only to be ignored, nothing's changed, fourteen years of waste. And now it's, oh my god, there's too many horses, let's eradicate them. I spent, um, I don't know, I drove a long distance a few weeks ago around the national park. Um, I viewed Snowy Hydro too and, you know, earthworks everywhere for different things that I, I Googled and searched about mining in the early days and a lot of that park is not natural. It never will be what it was before man became involved. Um, so you can't return it. And the other thing that I would like to raise and, and to be noted is that we all hear about the negative effect the horses have on the native animals. Yet not once, other than pudging, which is the horse's hoof imprint, um, what is the direct impact on the native animals? No one's ever said that, like, what, what has, what has the wild horse caused, um, loss of or direct extinction of or negative to which particular native animals?
Hmm, thank you. No, thank you for that answer, that's really useful, thank you. The honourable Wes Fain?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Ms Sutton, thank you very much for appearing today and, uh, thank you for the evidence you've given so far. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, touch on, um, some of the other aspects around this issue. Um, you, you, you're well known for your advocacy around rehoming and your advocacy around the brumbies in general. But could you provide some insights to the impact it's having on people, brimby advocates, people that love horses, um, to know that these, um, these iconic animals are being culled using aerial culling?
Look, um, for every single one of us, sorry, I'm getting a bit emotional about it because for every single one of us that have put the hard guards in, and I mean years of negotiating and trying to work out a way where we could satisfy all stakeholders of the national park, to see this after fourteen years as the outcome for the wild horses, um, there's a lot of people that are not coping, there are people, good people, good, um, honest citizens that would probably be pushed to doing things. And we've seen that over the past few years, you know, panels being taken down in the national park and, you know, a horse head dropped in, in the national park's office. These are things that good people are being pushed to do as a matter of sheer desperation. Because we work with the horses, we, we, we see the qualities, we understand, we're researching genetics to see, you know, are they something unsightly, are they something undesirable? No, they're not, you know, a- and so for us, for all of us and for a lot of, we have sixteen thousand followers, which isn't a large number in the bigger picture things, but who are all affected, all.
Yeah. And is it fair to say that part of that, um, and look, this is my word, um, I'll say desperation that people are feeling in relation to the issue around brumbies is because they feel that there is a better way for this to occur, that we don't need to be culling brumbies from the air, we could be perhaps rehoming them or looking at other issues such as, um, uh, fertility control, um, to, to, to get a manage, to get a manageable and reasonable outcome that, that doesn't see us shooting horses?
Definitely, definitely. The, the, the thing is that you have independent Australian citizens stepping up to do a positive humane management strategy, right? Where, where training them, we're preparing them, we're microchipping, we're DNA, we're being responsible, okay? We don't have the funding to step up to the mark that everybody else has, we don't have the media power. So I guarantee you that if pictures of horses being shot were on general media, the outcry and the support for the wild horses would increase one hundred percent because people don't know. They, they see, you know, posts by invasive species council, they're all horses. And the word feral in itself denotes something undesirable, something unworthy. You know, for anyone who doesn't know a horse or doesn't see the finished product of the horse, it's, it, it's something that, you know, um, they don't have the ideals of just how beautiful, how genetically sound, the inbreeding is minimal. There are genetic strengths in these horses that we will need in the future in the equine world because our horses are becoming weak. Um, anyone that knows anything about horses know that horses are suffering a lot of human problems. Um, so these horses have found a way to live without us.
Yeah, I, um, just in the break, I was, I was talking to some, somebody who's here, um, and she's provided some information to me. And I'm going to table it, um, you can't see it, but it's, you may have seen it online. I remember seeing the photos in, in one of the, um, uh, the forums that's online about, um, the way that children are being impacted by the thought of, of horses being shot. And it's, these, these are, they're three submissions from, from children, uh, you know, the, effectively drawings, but they also have, um, you know, uh, an attempt to try and communicate to people how much the impact is of, 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 um, the government shooting what is an iconic species, um, with helicopters. And it's, it's impacting people from young and old. Now, given that there is that amount of goodwill towards the brumbies in, in the population, do you believe that we can, um, if properly funded, find a way to manage these horses without aerial culling?
We definitely can, and, and the, the thing is about it, you know, we have visitors from all over. We've had, um, volunteers from across the world that have come and done a program for six weeks of just volunteering and learning the Australian way. Um, we have elderly people that live in our community that come out on the bus. They can't walk, but the bus drives through the sanctuary and they get to see the wild horses. And we have kids with disabilities from the special school often come out here for our barbecue and they'll go and spend time with the horses. We have kids that are normally shut down and withdrawn that somehow get a connection with one of the horses because they do work on vibration and they do work on how you are internally and, you know, they feel anger, they feel passiveness. Um, so, and, and the elderly people more so affected in the sense that they have memory of, you know, their father was a, a light horseman or, you know, the settlement of the continent. So that connection is ingrained in them for, you know, sixty years of their life. And then they see a new generation coming in where our only solution, our only answer to a one species living in a, a na- natural environment is to eradicate it. It doesn't make sense.
And, and it's funny, the way that you describe that situation, my great-grandfather was, um, in the light horse. My son, who's autistic, is, um, does equine therapy and, um, has become an exceptional horse rider, um, I'll say. Uh, and, and I, so I can see what you're saying and, and the impact that, that this would be having on, on not only, I guess, my life and from that perspective, but, but other people's lives. And, and you've said that, you know, it's just a question of funding to, to have a more humane, um, outcome for these, these horses. What do you estimate would be the, the requirement for a, a more... What do you estimate would be the, the requirement for a, a more humane, uh, more equitable outcome for the brumbies? What do you think it would cost the government instead of spending money on helicopters, marksmen and, uh, all the other associated costs with the aerial culling of these brumbies?
Okay, well, so I think that there would need a standard to be set so that associations, um, in this field become incorporated, become charities. I think that the funding should be available for initial setups of, uh, land. Uh, I think that there should be a governing body who, that is applied to for that funding. I don't think it should be just really nearly given out. I think that there needs to be accountability, there needs to be, you know, an annual report as to how successful this has been and what the funding's covering. We've already worked on those things and I do believe I sent you my suggested management plan. Um, we've been working for the last two years, as well as the thirty horses we have in care, to raise the funds to purchase land. Once the land is acquired, I think that each of those incorporated associations can set up programs where funding isn't just reliable on the government, um, you know, where they can use tourism, educational, um, we work one hundred percent volunteer. Not one person is paid, no money spent on media campaigns or whatever, we work off word of mouth. I looked at the Invasive Species, um, Council's, uh, budget, um, submission, eighteen million dollars for wild horse management, eighteen million. What are they going to do? You know, put, put five million aside for wild horse rehomeners. God knows, if we get nothing now, imagine what we could do with, you know, a, a minuscule amount of funding from the Australian government.
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy to open it up to other questions. I've got plenty more, but I, I don't want to monopolise the time.
Honorable Aileen MacDowell?
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. I was just wondering what the capacity at the sanctuary is for the wild horses?
Uh, my sanctuary, we are full. We cannot take any more. Uh, as I said, funding to purchase land, sizable land, you can't do, um, successful rescue if you don't have foresight for, yes, okay, these ones may train up well for rehoming programs, these ones need long-term sanctuary. That's the biggest issue for every single person, is having the space to do it successfully. Um, you know, you, I, I would love to put my hand up and say, oh yes, I'll take another load of horses. I cannot, I cannot take those while we work to raise our own funds.
So how many wild horses do you have there at the moment then?
I have thirty wild horses.
Thirty, yeah, okay.
Yes, on ten acres.
On, on ten acres. And so does that mean you can't participate in the rehoming because you like to bring them back first to the sanctuary and do the assessment and then rehome? So you can't participate at the moment?
I cannot participate at the moment. As I said, we've been working for the last few years to raise the funds to buy sizable land so that we can set up a better program than we have at the moment. We've worked on our rehoming policies, our DNA testing, microchipping, vaccinating. We offer life sanctuary to that animal, so anything that we step up to rescue is, we are responsible for it for its life, um, because life situations change for people. And it's like we're using donated funds to rescue an animal and an animal's a responsibility you must have for life. That was ingrained in me and that's why our policies are the way they are. So we've had four horses come back due to circumstance changes for those who are homeless. Um, so we have to keep space, you know, if, if something's to arise where an animal needs sanctuary again. So the size of the land, um, is very, very important and the quality of the land, of course, you know, we've looked at land where we thought, oh, we need to, we need to get some land, we need to do that desperately. And the fact of the matter is land has gone ridiculous. And buying land, you need land that's conducive to wild horses. In other words, we spend forty thousand dollars a year on feed at the moment, right? That was our annual budget last year, um, which is roughly, you know, about fourteen hundred dollars a fortnight, which we raise. Um, we, you need land where you can grow hay for seasons where it's not quite so good. You need, you know, you need a setup like we have, um, I'm quite happy to ship, to send photos of how we are set up here. So you need an intense working area which has a holding yard, a vet crush and whatever, because once an animal comes into domestic life, it comes under domestic legislation. So you still must do the basics to care for an animal. You can't just stick it out in the paddock and go, okay, it's safe now, I don't have to do anything further. That's incorrect, you know? And we don't want to rehome like that. We don't want to rescue like that. We don't want to see a problem where, you know, people are stepping up, which is happening, um, I will admit, where we're stepping up, rescuing mobs of horses and turning them out as they are, because not too far down the track. The breeding of those horses is then going to be another issue that needs to be addressed later on. So having a facility, having the funding to be able to bring in wild horses, geld Australians, release them as family units, have an annual, um, management strategy where you're bringing in the foals, easy to train, easy to rehome, document, DNA, do all that sort of thing. So you have a productive, um, animal rescue, not, not just hoarding of horses, which is very important.
Sorry, and just one final question. When you're rehoming the, um, the horses, so, so you've brought the horse in, assessed it, how do you like work with the, the, the rehomer so that you're satisfied that the horses are going to good homes?
Okay, so our strategy, uh, at first off is that the person interested writes an expression of interest. And that's an introduction to our committee. Not all of our committee are here on the sanctuary. They tell us about their facilities, their abilities, their dreams and hopes and why they want to take on a brumby. That's the first port of call. Then we invite them for a visit and we put several horses in. So we bring several different minded types of horses in and they get to work with each one of those horses. And one horse they may join up with and have a relationship with. So we assess them, we allow them to catch the horse, pick up its feet, brush it, do everything with it. Once they do that and they want to make application, they then supply two references from professionals in the equine industry, such as vet, dentist, um, you know, there's quite a few different people. Those references come in and then we do a lease agreement, which we had, um, made by horse lawyers, where it says that you can't use this animal for breeding, um, if it's a mare. We do not rehome colts, they're all, all animals are gelded. Um, we, you know, and, and so they go through a couple of hoops, which is the best we can do with what we have to try and establish a good home. Most of our rehomeners are either out showing their horses in open competition or they're using them for, um, you know, working with, with people with disabilities or so on. And most keep us updated, we get photos every now and then of how the horse is going. If life changes, then the animal comes back to us and we go through that process again.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, the Honorable Bob Namper has a question.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Um, just wonder if you could just give me some clarity, um, on the rehoming process because I'm, I'm fairly new to a lot of this, but do rehomeners have specific requests with respect to colour, age, temperament, um, gender, um, or did I typically?
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. Um, so we, we have a joke, or we have done, some of us long-term rehomeners, we call the colour tax, um, which is everyone wants a pretty colour, you know? And yes, coloured animals, um, you know, we are Australian and we do have preferences. Coloured horses are easier to rehome, um, than non-coloured horses. Um, that's, that's quite, that's quite a common thing. But I don't think that the rehomeners, I mean, at the end of the day, I suppose you could look at it like this. If you had two animals you were going to rescue, this one you knew the genetic history of and you know that it's got some very good genetics and this one doesn't. So if we were able to do that before we rehomed, do you know what I mean? Then, then you'd be choosing the quality or type of horse that you take, not just a visual. So yes, people are visual as to sometimes what they want to take. A lot of people are just want it, they want to step up and they want to help. They want to take on rehoming a brumby, so there's room for that rescue to take in another one. That is, that is probably sixty percent of rehoming is, is that people want to help.
Right. Does that, I suppose, request for specificity around the type of horse that, that people ask for, is, is that a bit of an impediment in the rehoming process, um, for you or?
Well, again, it comes back to funding, you know? If you take a mare, you don't have, you know, a thousand dollar vet bill to geld that animal, you know what I mean? So it's about the, the cost. If you take a mare from the wild, chances are she's pregnant. Are you in a position to take on a mare and a foal? You know, the, these are things, they're the reality of rehoming, you know, is what can the person financially and responsibly take on? And so that does make a big difference, whereas if you have sanctuaries, then mares can go to sanctuaries, have their, their foal in safety, that foal then can go through the program. So instead of, you know, rehoming two horses at once and giving someone some burden, you're actually doing it responsibly.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time today. Um, your evidence has been extremely, um, useful, so thank you again, um, for giving us your time. Um, there may be further questions from the committee, um, the secretary will be in contact with, with you about those questions. Um, and thank you, thank you again for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
What do you mean you're new to this?
I now welcome, um, our next witness, our next witnesses, um, and thank you both for making the time to give evidence today. I remind you that you do not need to be sworn in, as you have been sworn at an earlier hearing before this committee. Um, but would you like to start with a short opening statement?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Um, as I think the committee is well aware, the National Parks and Wildlife Service is required by law to reduce the horse population to three thousand horses in four retention areas by thirty June twenty twenty seven, and by law to reduce the population outside of those areas to zero. Firstly, I wanted to just quickly commend the, the National Parks and Wildlife staff who are implementing horse control to meet this legal requirement. I think I've said to the committee previously, feral animal control is not something that staff enjoy doing, it can be very challenging, very confronting. Staff are undertaking this control because they are required by law to do so and because it is necessary to prevent severe impacts on the environment and cultural heritage in the park. They're implementing control in accordance with the best science and the best practice, demonstrating great professionalism, skill, and importantly, an absolute commitment to the highest welfare standards. They continue to do this despite ongoing harassment, threats and abuse. And we will continue to take measures as an agency and as a government to support and protect staff and where possible, where required, to take action against those who harass and threaten public servants who are simply doing their job. And I will just thank the unions, in particular the PSA, for their support in this respect. Um, secondly, I did want to provide an update on the number of horses removed. So as at twenty five March this year, four thousand one hundred and ninety-six horses have been removed from the park since the plan came into force. Nine hundred and fifty-nine have been rehomed, including forty-three on the, the weekend just passed. That's twenty-three percent of all horses removed. One thousand three hundred and thirty-six have been shot from the air, that's thirty-two percent. Uh, one thousand and twenty-nine have been shot from the ground, that's about twenty-five percent.
Sorry, how many?
Since the date, sorry, did you want me to repeat one of those?
Um, the, uh, thirty-two percent, what was the number?
One thousand three hundred and thirty-six.
Thank you.
And was it one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine?
One thousand and twenty-nine have been shot from the ground.
Thank you.
Since the date of the population survey last year, one thousand six hundred and sixty-three horses have been removed, so that's part of the four thousand one hundred and ninety-six. Um, three hundred and ten from removal areas, one thousand three hundred and fifty-three from retention areas, of those, one thousand and thirty from the southern retention area. So the point there is there's been very little control in the north, or very low numbers of horses removed in the north since the survey was undertaken. Um, thirdly, I just wanted to comment on the welfare standards. I'm pleased there have been no adverse welfare outcomes so far in the implementation of the aerial shooting program. I will say that, to the best of my knowledge, this is the most heavily scrutinized feral animal control program in Australia. We've had an independent vet evaluating the preliminary program of aerial shooting. There'll be a further evaluation by that independent vet later this year. Um, the RSPCA has an ongoing audit role, obviously it observed the preliminary program and continues to observe programs at its election. We've had a previous independent review of ground shooting operations which found we are meeting the highest welfare standards. I think there's been at least one previous complaint investigated by the RSPCA which found no evidence of any breach. I'm aware of a complaint made to the RSPCA last week, um, by a person who inspected carcasses, I think in the southern part of Cosiosco. I don't intend to comment on the specifics of that case, noting the RSPCA will have a, have a process to, to respond to that complaint. We'll of course provide all information and access that the RSPCA requires. I will say generally, in relation to our aerial shooting operations, I speak regularly to the staff involved in delivering these operations. I consistently ask the question, similar questions, you know, did the operation occur without any adverse welfare incidents? And for all operations, I'm told and advised the SOP has been complied with, and that means multiple bullets to the target area, it means no non-fatal leanings and no adverse welfare outcomes. However, I just want to stress, we're not complacent. With any feral animal control operation, there is always a risk. We have best practice systems to minimise this risk and those systems are working at the moment. We will constantly review them. If any incident occurs, we are and will be transparent. We'll learn from the incident and we'll implement any additional measures that are required. Um, and the third and sort of final point I wanted to cover, I guess, was the survey and, and some of the population estimate pieces. Uh, again, as you know, the twenty twenty-three survey generated an estimate of twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven to twenty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty horses. Another way of looking at that is that, that's the ninety-five percent confidence interval. Another way of looking at that is that we can be ninety-seven point five percent confident there are at least twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven horses all were at the time of the survey. There has been some evidence given to this committee, um, which I'm sure was given in good faith, but contains some errors, and I'm not going to try and address all of them, but I did just want to call out two or three. Um, there was evidence provided that for reliable modeling, it's necessary to see a minimum of sixty clusters. To avoid any confusion, in the twenty twenty-three survey, there were two hundred and seventy-two clusters in the northern Cosiosco block, a hundred and twenty clusters in the southern cos, southern block. So to the extent sixty clusters is important, this threshold has well and truly been exceeded. There was evidence given to the committee also that it's necessary to assume zero horses in areas where the helicopter did not fly. This represents a misunderstanding of the survey methodology. So the twenty twenty-three survey looked at a survey block which is about thirty-nine percent of Cosiosco. It sampled or counted horses in a little over one-fifth of that survey area. That one-fifth area is an unbiased and representative sampling of the larger area. It is valid therefore to extrapolate from that one-fifth to the entire survey area. There was also evidence given that the University of St Andrews peer reviewed the two thousand and nineteen survey report and quote, "really ripped it apart", unquote. This is not an accurate statement. I'll give you two quotes from the University of St Andrews. Quote, "We have no concerns about design or field methods", unquote. Quote, "There is no reason to doubt the reported abundance estimates and the derived finite rates of population growth", unquote. We've released that report in GIPPA, so if the committee doesn't have it, we'd be happy to provide it. I think, I, I think the evidence that you have heard today confirms that twenty twenty-three population survey is consistent with the best available science, noting, of course, that there is still uncertainty when you're looking at trying to estimate numbers over very large areas. Um, we will continue to look at ways to improve the survey design to test new and evolving to test new and evolving technologies and to welcome input from all stakeholders as part of that process. We are taking a very conservative approach in looking at the number of horses to be removed in 2024. So there's that 3,000 statutory target in retention areas. We are assigning that across the four retention areas. So for example, 2,335 horses will be retained in the northern retention area. We've estimated the population in each retention area based on the 2023 survey. In calculating the number of horses to be removed from each retention block, we're using the lower 95% confidence interval for each retention area, and we're including a buffer. So we are very confident that as a result of this operation, there will be more than 3,000 horses in retention areas when we do our next survey later in 2024. And finally, I I did just want to make some comment on the crowdfunded project to count small horses at a small section of Cosiosco. We really welcome any contribution to this challenge of estimating populations over large areas, and in particular, any contribution to looking at how technology can help us in in meeting this challenge. And we're really happy to work with others. We haven't been given information on this particular project, but obviously there's some information on the website and and social media. And I would constructively offer the following observations, which also reflect the view of CSRO and Department of Ag and Fisheries experts that we've consulted. The first point is, there's no scientific basis for the selection of the 21,000 project area. In other words, there's no survey design, it's not a rep- a a representative or unbiased sample, and therefore it doesn't and is not able to tell us anything about the population of horses in that northern survey block or in in Cosiosco as a whole. Secondly, I think you've also heard evidence that it's, while the proponents of the survey seem to be suggesting it is a count, in fact, it does not provide perfect detectability. So you are not counting every horse even in that area. As with pretty much every survey technique, you need to deal with this issue of what are you not seeing? Uh, and and that's that's not addressed in this in this project. And thirdly, again, I think you've heard today, it's not possible, it's not apples and apples when you're looking at this versus the 2023 survey that we've conducted. And in particular, what that means is you can't take the average density in the northern block from the 2023 survey, which is a much larger area, and say therefore that average is what will apply in this much smaller area. It's just not a valid use of data or or survey outcomes. So having said that, while there are issues, it's really exciting to look at people trying to use new technology. We're doing the same thing with drones, aerial imagery and a whole lot of things. And we'll certainly be happy to work with anyone to to improve the uptake of that technology. The the final thing I guess I wanted to say is, uh, aerial shooting has been introduced uh, as one of the tools we can use for a reason, and that is that we cannot meet the statutory target without aerial shooting. In making that decision, we satisfied ourselves, of course, and the government satisfied itself that aerial shooting can be delivered in accordance with the highest welfare standards. But if aerial shooting, to be really clear, if aerial shooting is not part of the measures that we have, we cannot meet the target of 3,000 horses by 2027. And if we cannot meet that target, that means the ecology, the environment in Cosiosco National Park, the threatened species in national in Cosiosco National Park are at much greater risk of extinction. That is how important it is to be able to undertake the full suite of control measures. If we can't use the full suite of measures, you are drastically increasing the risk of extinction for threatened species in Cosiosco National Park. Sorry, that's probably a little longer than it should have been.
That's fine. I might start by asking a couple of questions myself. I was just wondering why um, national parks did not follow the advice of the RSPCA in relation to the SOP that was developed for aerial shooting? Why certain aspects of their recommendations were ignored?
Could you please give me an example?
Sure. So the RSPCA commented in their response to the SOP in regards to the risk of orphaning and starvation of young at foot, and asked if there was changes that could be done around the timing of the year um, of using that strategy to avoid foaling season. They also recommended more specific requirements around chase times, um, rather than having no limit on the chase time. They also raised concerns around shooting in dense covered terrain because of the animal welfare impacts there. My understanding is that the SOP hasn't addressed any of this. Um, and I'm just wondering why the RSPCA feedback was ignored in those aspects.
So the RSPCA feedback was not ignored. I'll take them in reverse order. In terms of the terrain, uh, I I probably get the um, the language not perfect, but the SOP has a specific provision which says you basically cannot take the shot unless you have a clear view, a clear shot. And I think it includes words, if in doubt, do not shoot. So the SOP is very clear that if you are in terrain where it's not either not safe or where welfare considerations would mean you shouldn't take the shot, then you don't take the shot. So we've addressed that point. The issue of uh, foals, we have included, we did include additional measures in the SOP to ensure staff were constantly looking for foals. Uh, and I can't remember all of the measures, but there are three or four things that were added into the SOP to ensure that um,
Sorry, but the recommendation was to avoid shooting during foaling season?
I think the I think the point from the RSPCA was more a question around whether.
Around the timing of the the timing of aerial shooting during foaling season?
So I understood the RSPCA comment to cover two things, the timing and what other measures should be in place. So we added other measures in place. In terms of the timing, um, our judgment is that um, there are potentially foals at any time of the year. There are some parts of the year where there are more likely to be more foals.
That's what I that's what I mean when I say foaling season, which is the vet.
So we didn't include in the SOP a prohibition on operations at any particular point of the year. The fact that there are going to be foals potentially present all year round means whenever you're conducting this operation, you need measures in there to protect foals, and that's what we've done.
With all due respect, we've also heard evidence um, from veterinary experts in this space during the inquiry that there's certainly a higher welfare risk during the period of time where there's going to be far more foals because of particularly in regards to aerial shooting and splitting up families. Um, and we've also heard um, evidence um, of um, shot family groups with foals now missing and the and the dead bodies of the foals haven't been located um, by people who have gone into the park after aerial shooting operations. I assume that that's the major concern around actually shooting during foaling season and the increased risk during those more dense periods where there's going to be a significantly larger number of foals, which the vets have indicated is a period of time. Obviously, um, previously it was, um, there was um, regulations in place that would stop um, the shooting of of these animals during these periods. Um, and then obviously the current SOP has lifted um, that restriction.
So I I do want to just emphasize, this is a really significant and important issue, and we and we treat it as such. The SOP didn't lift requirements. I think we've worked through, having looked at the RSPCA advice and tightened the requirements around foals. We haven't gone to the extent of saying there are some types of the year where you shouldn't do operations.
But the previous, in in previous.
Can I just?
It was previously in there, and it and it being removed is what I mean when I say it's been lifted.
It it wasn't in our SOP, the the.
That's correct, it's not in the SOP.
The national SOP um, contains a couple of measures. It basically says it encourages not to shoot not to shoot at some times of the year, but it acknowledges that national that national SOP acknowledges that there will be shooting at times of the year when there are foals. So.
I'm just talking about the foaling season. We've all recognized and the vet did recognize that there will be foals at all periods of time of the year. We're just talking about the foaling season where there's a significantly larger number of foals.
And so what I'm, I guess, I'll try and summarize my answer very quickly. We're very conscious of the issue. It's a very important issue. We've included measures in the SOP to minimize the risk and to ensure. So you mentioned evidence that there were foals that had been abandoned. I've not seen evidence of foals being abandoned. Happy to look at that if there is evidence. But we've got measures in the SOP that seeks to ensure that doesn't happen. But the other thing we do is we are looking, when we're planning our operations, while it's not in the SOP, what you've seen is the bulk of our operations this year are going to be carried out in that in the north, in particular in that area, April onwards, which is avoiding the major foaling season. So we are conscious of that issue, it is factoring into our operational decisions. And in the SOP itself, um, we've included measures to minimize the risk. So that is the balance that we've seek that we're seeking to strike.
In regards to some of those measures, in regards to the foals, you said that, um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that one of those is to then have a ground shooter on the ground to shoot any foals that have escaped those family groups. My understanding though is also that one of the explanations for the use of aerial shooting is that ground shooting is not always possible because you can't get to the animals. How is it that you can ensure a ground shooter can get to escaped foals? But you can't um, you can't get to them otherwise, and therefore you need to use aerial shooting. It doesn't quite make sense to me.
That's not one of the provisions in the.
Can you explain to me what the provisions are then?
Yes, there is a provision that says, uh, just looking through it. Team members should be aware of the possibility of isolated foals where, due to maternal abandonment. Obviously, there are some.
Which we've also heard evidence has never been detected in horses ever.
I won't comment on that. Whether due to maternal abandonment, disturbance or other factors, keep lookout for such foals and any isolated foals should be shot.
But but how?
We have another provision that says to the extent.
So how how do isolated foals be shot if they're not shot aerially or on the ground?
They are shot aerially.
Right, so that's not a provision, that's just saying shoot all horses that you can 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 see. I'm wondering what the welfare provision is in regards to foals being split from family groups during a foaling, with the horses being shot during foaling season?
The provision is that team members need to be aware of this risk. They need to be on a lookout, and then they need to not fly past, but actually, excuse me for putting it bluntly, but they need to shoot isolated foals that are found. So we're building into the process the fact there needs to be continued vigilance for isolated foals. And and they can't keep flying and continue with an operation. They need to take action to ensure that that isolated foal is not left. There are other measures, to the extent reasonably possible, consistent with the other provisions, dependent foals should be shot first. So there's a series of provisions which seek to ensure.
So the series of provisions is essentially to be aware that this is a major welfare risk?
It is a major welfare risk, yes, we acknowledge that.
But 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 the provision itself is just be aware?
No, the provision is that you prioritize, you prioritize locating and removing isolated foals.
You prioritize shooting foals before before their mothers?
Yes.
And what about the requirement around chase times?
So I I think you'll recall from the preliminary program, the median chase time was 54 seconds. The requirement in the SOP is that the chase time is kept to a minimum to the extent practicable, reasonably practicable, I think it is.
So so sorry, so the recommendation from the RSPCA is that there is a specific time, a a time limit? Um, and we heard this morning from a vet that 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 should be under one minute. I understand you're saying that, you know, in the trial it was 54 seconds. I'm just wondering, just in regards to the SOP, why you haven't specified a maximum chase time in regards to animal welfare? Because that could potentially allow a chase time of two to three minutes, um, which we've heard is is a major animal welfare concern, based on the fact that you're keeping at a minimum is a very vague terminology.
Because uh, in all of these matters, you are trying to manage a number of different risks. So one of the welfare outcomes that we're looking for is to remove all members of a family group. Obviously, the chase time needs to be a bit longer if that family group is a little larger. So our staff who are delivering the program are very aware that they need to keep chase times to a minimum. I think the preliminary program demonstrates that they're very conscious of that and that they've achieved that outcome. 54 seconds is a is a good outcome. But they do need to make judgments as they're implementing the program. And those, they're juggling a number of risks to get the best possible welfare outcome. One is removing foals first if they come across foals. Two is removing the entire family or social group to minimize um, stress and and to get the best welfare outcome in that sense. When you put all of those things together, it makes it difficult to specify, to make a very specific requirement in relation to timing.
Okay, so we're relying on on awareness again.
We're relying upon the judgment of highly skilled, highly trained people who are putting welfare at the top of their list of factors when they're implementing this program.
But you can understand why people feel that welfare is not being put at the top of the list when when the SOP itself um, doesn't even follow the very bare minimum advice from the RSPCA themselves.
I I can understand that people are very concerned, as we are, about welfare issues. I I can't understand people arguing that we are not putting welfare at the top of our list because we are, and I think that's very evident.
Advice from the RSPCA hasn't made it into the standard operating procedure. And 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 that's one of the the community concerns. Um, and it's a concern that we've heard repeatedly throughout this inquiry is that that very bare minimum advice hasn't been included in the SOP. And and you've come here today to say, you just need to trust us, these are experts, they're going to use judgment, they're going to use awareness, and therefore we don't need the bare minimum advice from the RSPCA.
Now, um, what I'm saying to the committee is that we've listened to the input from independent vets and from the RSPCA. We have made adjustments to the standard operating procedure after having listened to that input. And we are subject to a huge level of scrutiny. We've got independent vets flying around watching what we do. We've got the RSPCA auditing what we do. So the level of transparency, it's not a matter of.
But that's not transparency to the community?
Well, it is because the results are published.
Has has access to those RSPCA audits, to those vet reports?
The community, we've published the vet report, and the RSPCA will take action if they see us breaching um, welfare requirements.
And and you did say earlier, and I'm sorry, I know that there'll be other questions, I'll just finish with this. I noticed you said there was no evidence of any breaches. However, you've also recognized that on Friday, RSP- RSPCA inspectors attend the attended the park to investigate a cruelty complaint. My understanding is you don't want to comment on that because it's an ongoing investigation. But given that there is an ongoing investigation, isn't that, I mean, how can we say that there's no evidence of a breach when there's an active investigation underway?
There there's been no evidence of adverse welfare incidents up to this point in time, and that includes the review by the independent vet and the auditing by the RSPCA up until this point. I didn't want to comment on the the complaint that was made on Friday. And I I will wait to see the outcome of that complaint.
If it's proved that that horse did have one shotgun wound that caused the the death of that horse, um, what actions will the department take?
Well, as I said, I I won't preempt the inquiry, but in my opening statement, I acknowledge that any feral animal control operation, you can't eliminate all risk. What we will, what I, the commitment I can give is that we will be transparent and that we will review anything that um, uh, needs to be reviewed and 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 make the changes that we need to make i- if there are changes required. And that transparency, I think, has been a feature of the process up until now. As I said, I don't think there's any other feral animal control program in the country, probably not ever, where the the people implementing the program have had an independent vet and the RSPCA flying around literally observing what they're doing and then publishing reports on it. And and we welcome, we welcome that transparency.
And in regards to that transparency, are you also saying that whatever the results are of that RSPCA investigation, that that you agree to make that public?
I don't want to preempt the results of that, but that will be.
Not about what the results are, but but that you would be open to making sure that that was publicly available?
What I was going to say is I think that will be a matter for the RSPCA.
Honorable Whisping?
I'm happy to take questions, but I thought Ms. Sue Higginson couldn't go before? No? Well, I've got plenty, so thank you, Chair. Mr. Fleming, thank you very much. Miss Stewart-Estimates, I was very disappointed to see you were not not well enough to attend. I had plenty of questions for you at the time. One of those was around uh, Mr. Coleman's. One of those was around Mr Coleman's last appearance before this inquiry. And I'm sure you are ready to address some of those points. He indicated that he had communicated to National Parks and Wildlife Service that the use of 360 degree cameras on the helicopters and scope cameras was desirable. It's the word I'll use. And I think that in the instance that Ms Hurst has just spoken about, where there's conjecture as to perhaps adverse animal welfare outcomes, it could be the case that those scope cameras and 360 degree cameras might have provided the evidence to clear National Parks and Wildlife if there is found to be adverse animal welfare outcomes. How come you haven't put those cameras on the helicopters yet?
So the discussions that we've had with the RSPCA on this topic were of a general nature around the operational issues, really the full list of issues that would need to be considered if the use of cameras was to occur, noting that would be a government, effectively a government policy position that would need to be considered. And noting, of course, that presumably everyone would agree it would have to apply generally across all government operations, all private land operations, recreational hunting. I mean, you wouldn't single out presumably a single operation by a single agency and say you need to have cameras but no one else does. So I think the point was, the discussion was really that there was much bigger issues here to consider. And so there has not been, just to be clear, there has not been a specific request from the RSPCA for us to use cameras in the horse control operations in Coziosco.
Now, I appreciate that you would want to bring in other organisations and other, other programmes into this recording discussion because obviously that provides you a level of cover. And that's, that's my words and, and I'll, I'll finish my scenario before I put the question to you. That you would want to drag everyone else in because you would be aware that government has a lot of inertia and so these things would take time. But it wouldn't be, as you've just said, a government policy position. It could be part of the SOP that is implemented by National Parks and Wildlife Service. You've stated previously that having the RSPCA involved in the development of, and, and commenting on the SOPs was one way that you would seek to have better animal welfare outcomes. Mr Coleman's evidence before us was clear and I'm happy to provide, I, I provided a copy in estimates and I can get another one again for you if you, I'm sure you've read it. But it was pretty clear that he had communicated to you his, it was his preference, not wanting to put words in his mouth, that you record this aerial cull. You could do it tomorrow, is that not the case?
So all I can do is repeat the fact that there has been no specific request to us to use cameras in the aerial shooting of horses in Coziosco National Park. In terms of your, if, if you don't mind, I'll be, I'll be brief. But in terms of your initial question, now I, I think introducing cameras in the way that you've talked about it into feral animal control operations actually does have significant policy implications. And therefore it is the sort of thing that the agencies within government who undertake feral animal control, including local land services and others, it is something that we would consider as a whole of government position. That's, that's the way we should do things.
But, but there is a difference, isn't there? Because where National Parks and Wildlife Service through the minister in 2000 were prosecuted by RSPCA in relation to aerial culling of rumbies, that hasn't necessarily been the case in other methods. So in that respect, that's where the difference is. And the requirement to record would be different from the regular aerial culling of other feral animals?
I'm, I'm not sure I follow your question entirely, but maybe I could just add this. In terms of aerial shooting, so obviously aerial shooting of feral animals is something that within New South Wales, National Parks and Wildlife Service and local land services conduct, both conduct very significant programmes.
And I'm supportive of that.
We coordinate our operations to a high level, including ensuring sort of consistent training standards, consistent standards across part of the FAST programme. So, I mean, we are intimately connected in terms of how we work together and a change like this would have implications across government and for others. And there's, there's no doubt about that.
I just wanted, sorry, I'm broadly, and I'm broadly supportive of aerial culling, but we're talking about horses which are multitude or magnitudes larger than the other animals that are being culled in aerial methods. So the, the outcomes seem to be different in relation to horses than they do to other animals. And that's where, when Mr Coleman gave his very clear, very clear evidence before this inquiry that was provided in, in estimates, and I'll, I'm happy to provide it again, that he's had those discussions, conversations with you, or sorry, with National Parks. I don't want to, this isn't about singling anybody out. And I, and sorry, as an aside, can I say that your discussion around staff, I 100% support. I think that any abuse of, of National Parks and Wildlife staff is abhorrent. And you are right that doing this job will be difficult. And, and I do not at all think that, that the staff need to be targeted. They are doing a job and, and I acknowledge that. And this is, this is not their, not their argument to have or their fight to have. And so they, they should not at all be, be attacked.
Appreciate, appreciate.
But where, but where the RSPCA has made a specific, has given specific, specific evidence before this committee to, to indicate to us that that is something that they are seeking to have put on the record, why hasn't it occurred?
I'm, well, my answer is that the RSPCA has not requested us to use cameras in this operation. Can I, can I just add? Your broader points earlier about feral animal control generally, and you talked about horses being larger. I'm, I'm not sure I understand the significance of that point. From our, from our perspective, we're conducting feral animal control operations 1500 hours every year, almost 1500 hours every year. We're doing that professionally. We're, we're doing it in a manner that meets the highest welfare standards. And those standards we apply to all animals. Doesn't matter whether it's pigs, goats, horses. So we are always striving to make the highest animal welfare standards.
Well, the evidence would indicate that the, the target area of, of the, the rumbies versus a smaller animal, the calibre being similar in nature, the, the, the time to, what's the words that they use? Insensibility, yes, is, is a lot, is, is greater in, in equine than it is for other species. And that's where I think the problem lies.
I'm, I'm not aware of any such evidence. I mean, I think you'd have to ask someone involved in shooting but whether it's easier to hit a target area of a large animal that moves relatively more slowly or a smaller animal that darts around and tends to stick undercover. So I, I'm not the best person to ask about that.
So can I just ask a follow-up question for my honourable colleague? With regard to the communications that RSPCA New South Wales had with the cameras, if they were to put a formal request in writing, would you then consider or commit to cameras?
I think what you're hearing from the discussion today is if the RSPCA puts anything to us, then we take it very seriously and we consider it. Will we agree with everything that they raise? Not necessarily. And some of the, if they were to put that issue to us specifically, we'd consider it. But I, it does have significant broader implications for feral animal control in the state. And so it would have to be considered in that context.
So at this stage you're saying they haven't written formally to you?
Correct.
That's okay. I now want to sort of turn to some of the, yeah, we're going, we're going till, till 1.30. And I'm sure, I'm sure Mr Fleming would, Mr Fleming would love to. Thank you. You spoke about the clusters earlier and the difference in, I think, the, 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 the clusters, number of clusters versus what, what was given in evidence. What, what is your understanding of what makes up a cluster?
My understanding, and I'll correct the record if I get this wrong, is that the cluster is a, can, is essentially the group of horses you see close together. And that can be one horse, but it, it is sometimes more than one horse.
Okay, so my understanding, and look, I could be wrong here, but it was interesting when you said that there was, there was talk around the fact that there was a lack of clusters, is that part of the reason that the clusters didn't count is because primarily there wasn't enough horses within the cluster for it to count as a cluster?
I'm, I'm confident that's not the case. I'm confident that's not the issue, yeah.
Okay, because that, that's my understanding as to why there was, the St Andrews had, hadn't, well, sorry, the, the method that's specified needs to have a number of horses within a cluster to make it a cluster. And that wasn't the case?
That, I, I, I'll come back and correct myself if I'm wrong, but I, I think you're wrong on that point. But we're happy to provide the St Andrews report, as I said, it, it does what you would expect and what we wanted. It goes through and raises issues, but, and we respond to those issues. So it's not a whitewash, it's something that actually went through and raised the issues where they needed to be raised. But I read out some of the key conclusions.
The last question I'll ask before I pass over is when the Honourable Emma Hurst was asking you questions around the SOP development and the comments that were written on the SOP, the, the draft SOP that was, that was given to RSPCA for comment, it's, it's now been made aware to us, having SO52, the documents, that there were suggestions that were put forward by the RSPCA that weren't adopted. And, and the Honourable Emma Hurst has certainly put those questions to you today. But given that the minister, the department and others, other stakeholders have continually pointed to the RSPCA's involvement as the difference between what occurred previously, say around 2000 with Debus and, and that aerial culling programme. And the programme that's implemented now was the involvement of the RSPCA in, in those SOPs. What changes were made by National Parks and Wildlife Service on the feedback from the RSPCA? Because at the moment, what we've seen is that things like foaling season, the, the cameras, all the advice that they've been giving, and you know, we can, we can have the debate around what level, you know, of conversation you had around the cameras, has been ignored.
So I'll say two things, Mr Fang. One, you, you're not correct to characterise that as the difference between now and, and 20 odd years ago. I mean, there are so many changes that have occurred in the last 20 years. We're using different helicopters, we're using different rifles, we're using different ammunition, we've got thermal gear, staff are trained to a higher standard. There are many, many changes that mean what we are doing now is very, very different to what was happening 20 years ago. What I would say and have said is that there is a very high level of transparency associated with this operation. And that includes having independent vets observing and having the RSPCA observing and auditing. And as far as I know, that hasn't happened in any other programme. I think your question about that, we have listened to the RSPCA and we have made changes in response to the RSPCA. And the RSPCA were really raising questions. They, and, and so we have responded to the RSPCA concerns. And the RSPCA flew around and observed the operation and came back and said this operation's been conducted in accordance with the SOP and there is no breach of relevant welfare legislation. So I think the engagement with the RSPCA is both productive and appropriate.
Doesn't quite answer the question.
I, I think it does answer your question.
Well, the question I asked was what changes?
I'm happy to take on notice and give you some detail around the changes, but I, I did mention some of them in response to the previous question. In particular around foals, there are two or three adjustments made which really specifically called out the need to be vigilant and looking for isolated foals and ensuring the priority was given to the removal of those foals. I think the general point that is a really important one is whether you're talking about feral horses or whether you're talking about other feral animals, it's impossible, it is impossible to eliminate every risk. If you want us to eliminate every risk, then we can't do rehoming because there are risks in rehoming. We can't do ground shooting, we can't do aerial shooting, we can't do anything. So if you want us to eliminate every risk around animal welfare, what you are saying is there can be no feral animal control and that is the end for our national parks and our threatened wildlife. The challenge for us is to get the balance right and to ensure that we have reduced that risk to the greatest extent we possibly can so that we are doing our job protecting parks and protecting wildlife while still meeting the highest welfare standards. And that is what our staff are doing.
Thank you Chair, I just want to come to the question of cameras and monitoring. I'm just asking you this in, in your context as a head of a government agency. It'd be peculiar, wouldn't it, for one agency involved in the control of invasive, invasive species to be singled out for that degree of monitoring and surveillance to the exclusion of all other agencies that also undertake the removal of feral animals?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that's partly the point I'm making. At, at one level, it's from a purely policy perspective, we work very closely with agencies and we try and integrate and align our operations. So to be introducing a particular measure for one agency would be at odds with that policy approach. But it would also be a terrible thing to say to our staff and in particular to say, right, anyone who's going to be involved in doing what the Parliament has said we must do. So the Parliament has said you must control horses in Coziosco. And by the way, we're going to introduce a requirement for you that no one else in government has to comply with. Of course, that would be a terrible thing for our staff.
I have a more fundamental problem with it. And, and that is, this is just from a prior life, but that is a significant workplace change. That, that is tantamount to workplace surveillance.
Yep.
Which would all, or I presumably result in a change management process which would involve consultation with staff. There are a whole range of industrial issues with respect to the introduction of that sort of technology, particularly in a context like this where the privacy of staff has been paramount in light of the threats that have been made in the past.
I'm happy to pause it, I'm happy to pause. I'm happy to pause the culling while we.
No, they're, but, I mean.
Let's pause the culling while we.
This is not a flippant.
Let's pause the culling.
Workplace surveillance is not a, a flippant policy decision.
You're, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. And I mean, for that reason, we haven't even contemplated taking it to staff because it hasn't been requested by the RSPCA.
That's not the evidence.
If it, well, it hasn't been requested by the RSPCA. If it was, it would be something that government would need to consider. And the workplace issues, the workplace and industrial issues would be huge.
Police body cams, ambulance body cams?
All right, I'll, I'll just move off surveillance for a moment. The scientific advisory panel has previously said that past horse management plans have failed to remove horses at a rate required to reduce the population in a substantive way, having regard to the breeding rate at Coziosco National Park. Noting the numbers that you have provided at the start of your evidence, do the current settings give National Parks and Wildlife Service sufficient confidence that the legislated targets can be met with the current framework that you are operating within?
So I'll answer that in two parts. Firstly, in the absence of aerial shooting, I think I answered this question in my introductory statement, the answer would be no. There is no way we would meet the legislative targets if aerial shooting was not a part of the suite. of the suite of measures that we can apply. And I just emphasize, we're applying a suite of measures. We're not putting all of our eggs in one basket. But that is one measure that must be part of the basket if we're to achieve the target. The second part of my response really goes to how we are planning our operations this year. And without, maybe I put it this way, that estimate that came from the survey last year, the 95% confidence interval, the bottom of that was roughly 12,790, I think. So you remove, we've got 97.5% confidence, there are more horses than that. Take 3,000 from that, which is the 3,000 that are to remain. You've got 9,700 odd horses that, based on that survey, would need to be removed. What we are planning to do this year is remove up to about 8,500 horses. So we can be 97.5% confident there are more than 4,000 horses, not 3,000 by the time they get to the July survey, sorry, the survey toward the end of the year. Now, that's based on the bottom of the confidence interval. If the best estimate is right, that's about 17,500 from memory, there would be not 4,000 horses left, there'd be 8,000 or 9,000 horses left. So our approach is to be conservative this year. Do the next survey toward the end of this year. That will tell us whether we've got the settings right and whether we need to then either continue at the same level next year or escalate or otherwise, noting that the statutory requirement is for a 3,000 at 30 June 2027. So my answer is we are conservative. And the real answer to your question is probably one we can give after the survey toward the end of this year. I would just say in relation to that survey, and there's been a lot of discussion around survey methodology and so on. And I think a lot of that discussion's been really useful. But the one point that probably hasn't been picked up clearly enough is what is the key question that we need to ask? And the key question from a point of view of a legal requirement is not actually how many horses are in Coziosco National Park, it is how many horses are in each retention area. And so that will guide how we design our survey this year and going forward. We'll still look at the park as a whole as well, but we'll be really trying to make sure that we've got the best survey design and using the best survey technology to answer that question about how many horses are in each retention area. And I think one of the witnesses earlier today talked about mark recaptured distance sampling. We've put on record that that's something that we will be aiming to trial. But it's not something that can be trialed at the park-wide level, because that's just too big a landscape. But for smaller populations in smaller areas, it can be trialed. It still carries with it a confidence interval and a level of uncertainty. But in the right circumstances, we hope it might give us a little greater precision.
Ms Higgins? Thank you. With the, you would have seen the airborne logic API. Does that, does it concern you or did it, did it present any concerns to you about the level of impacts that are visible from those images?
It did, but that concern, I had that concern well before looking at the imagery. If you, I think some of you are going to Coziosco tomorrow. It depends a bit on the seasonal conditions. But it's very clear when you're on the ground up there, you see the impacts. You see the trails from horses, you see the impact on riparian areas. And it's very clear when you look at the scientific evidence, we've had the Federal Threatened Species Scientific Committee saying that if we don't control horses, the risk of extinction for some of these species is significantly increased. So it was interesting to note, it reaffirms or is consistent with the very clear scientific evidence that is there, which is if we don't reduce the number of horses, the park is going to suffer ongoing degradation and species are going to be at greater risk of extinction.
Just, you know, just for a kind of analogy exercise, if a member of the community was to drive in a big four-wheel drive and do the same level of impact in an area that horse trails do to a particular, say, water source, what would there be, and it was deliberate, would there be, would there be a penalty for that? I'm just trying to get a grasp in terms of the management of our protected area network and the regulation around it.
I think Mr Smith has managed a lot of national parks.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
There are rules around that sort of thing.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course, there's rules around those sort of things. And I mean, there's a range of things that cause impacts to parks in different ways, of course. And four-wheel drives can be one of them. And we try and obviously, where we do facilitate four-wheel driving, we make sure that it's in the right spots, not the wrong spots. You know, we certainly don't encourage people taking four-wheel drives where they shouldn't take them. So if there's action to be taken, we would. But yes, that's one of the, that's one of the impacts that can happen on parks.
And with your, with the conservative approach that we're taking in terms to, of the maintenance of an invasive species in the national park in the retention areas, what will, what is the plan beyond 2024 to maintain, to make sure that we are doing our primary obligation and maintaining the ecological integrity of the Coziosco National Park?
Can I just go back to your previous question very quickly? Because I think the other analogy would be that if we were seeing that kind of impact from pigs, goats, et cetera, then of course, we would be focused on doing something about it. And really, there shouldn't be any difference in terms of what feral animal's causing the problem. So.
Thank you, that's helpful.
For 2024, I think we've got a program this year and very conservative targets for removal in retention areas. Obviously, for the removal areas, we're looking to get the population as close to zero as possible. So that will be a significant improvement to remove horses from areas of the park where they currently are. I think we look at the survey toward the end of 2024 and essentially determine what our program is for next year to make sure we're getting the numbers down to 3,000. And really, that's, I think, all we can do. To an extent, your question gets to the various other things we're doing across Coziosco National Park. We are removing a lot of feral deer, pigs, so that there's extensive feral animal control. Basically, the biggest feral animal control program we've ever conducted across the state happening, including in Coziosco. There's a lot of work, obviously, on fire management. So we're seeking to address all of the threats. And the other really important thing that's happening is we're rolling out the biggest ecological monitoring program that we've ever had in Coziosco National Park. And that's just thousands and thousands of trap nights. It's millions of images from camera traps, from audio recorders, bird surveys, veg surveys, lots of water monitoring. That will give us going forward a really good snapshot of the health of Coziosco. And over time, will give us evidence as to what's happening with the health of the park, the health of threatened species, the health of the waterways, all of those things. And in turn, obviously, that will inform how we pull the various management levers that we have.
Thank you. And is there, just on that, is there, in terms of the engaged staff working on those programs, is there, is there a very positive kind of, how do you say, a very, a workplace positive approach? And there's a feeling that perhaps we are in a position that we can turn the health of Cozi around? Is that something that is the feeling amongst your staff?
Would you like to answer that, Rob?
I think to go to the point about the Eco Health program, I think what it does do is set up a clear framework for us to be able to really, to really get a sense of how that particular park and other parks where we're running the program is happening. To the point about the staff engagement, whether they see a lot of positive benefit from it, I think yes, that would be yes. I mean, it's such an extensive program, like Mr Fong said, around the number of images and the amount of information that we're actually being able to pull together to get a clear picture about what the park looks like. It is a snapshot in time at this point. But as an ongoing piece of work, I think it will be transparent, not just to staff, but to the rest of the community about how the park's being managed. So I'm sure we can add to that.
Well, I think the thing I'd add is that if you look specifically at the program to control horses, I would say there's two things that I reflect on in terms of the staff. One is the very genuine and deep commitment to welfare. And some of the independent reviews have called on that. So our staff are very committed to welfare. And as I said in my introduction, it's a challenge to do any kind of feral animal control. But there is also a sense that horses were having a significant impact on the park and that that was quite demoralizing. To be able to do something about it is significant and welcomed by staff.
And is the idea.
Sorry, Ms Higgins, we are at time. I do have one just last follow-up question in regards to some of the questions that came from the Honourable Wes Fang. I know you mentioned that there was welfare provisions put into place in regards to the fact that shooting would happen, aerial shooting would happen during foaling season. And that those welfare provisions were to be aware and vigilant to make sure that the foals were shot and to prioritize shooting foals before their mothers. Did you get further feedback from the RSPCA that that adequately addressed their major concerns around shooting during foaling season?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall that, but I'm happy to take it on notice.
If you could take it on notice, whether, first of all, whether the RSPCA were asked to give further feedback that that addressed some of those welfare concerns? And also, if they did give feedback, if you could also provide that feedback on notice as well, that'd be good. If you're happy to do that?
Yep.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our session today. Thank you for your time in giving evidence to the committee today. I believe there were some questions on notice, but there might be further questions as well from the committee, that the secretariat will be in contact with you in regards to those questions on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.